Welcome to this special meeting of City Council on April 7th, 2022. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed, or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I'll call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, can you confirm the agenda posting and roll call, please?
Yes, the agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law, and there's a full quorum.
Thank you. And we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will open our first public comment period. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. 一個人 has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item, and as always, we ask people to be civil and concise in their comments. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak during public comment? All right, seeing no one, we will go to anyone wishing to call in. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is public comment for the special city council meeting for budget matters. Number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the initial public comment?
No comments were received.
Thank you. All right, hearing no one for the initial public comment period, we'll close the comment period and move to item number one for possible action. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Finance Director, Diane Pelletier, will be starting you off with the presentation on the governmental funds, operations, and maintenance budgets.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, fellow coworkers, and citizens. This is the second meeting for the fiscal year, starting July 1st, '22, to June 30, '23 budget, and just wanted to kind of give you a high-level overview of what we'll be going over today, and who will be presenting them, and then we'll get started. But item number one, which is a review of the governmental funds, will be presented -- item actually number one and two, which is the governmental funds and the proprietary funds. All the changes and discussion will be led by Angela Manonin, our Budget Director. Item number three, which is the staff presentation and direction on the proposed comprehensive master fee schedule, will be discussed by Brock Armentraut. Number four, which is a discussion and staff-directed directive regarding the addition or removal of capital projects, will be led by Keegan Littrell and Carol Lillis. Item number five is the mayor's item, and item number six, yours truly, will lead the discussion on the ARPA resolution. So I do want to say a couple things, too, that this is the second meeting, and we have three other opportunities to meet if needed, and that would be April 19th, which is a reserved date that we currently have in the budget schedule. We could also have an item on the second April meeting, or the first meeting in May. But the reason why I'm stating this is because when we get to that May 24th meeting, which is the adoption of the budget, there's really no time to change it, because we would not have time to have a public hearing, because we have to submit that budget by June 1st. So it's important today that items that are discussed and changes are voted on and agreed to. We will add them to the budget, and if needed, we can have a meeting on these other dates, and if not needed, then we would be bringing back the budget on May 24th with the changes we determined today. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Angela to begin the discussions.
Mayor and City Council?
Yes.
Before Angela begins her presentation, I just wanted to briefly go over the handouts that are before you this afternoon pursuant to my contract, my employment contract, the city clerk's employment contract, and the city manager's employment contract. We are required to provide you an itemized list of our anticipated travel, as well as our subscriptions and dues that are going to be included in the operations budget. And so that itemized list is before you today. We are required to include it during the budget process, so we thought that today would be a -- would make sense to include this list. Again, these are just a breakdown of what this -- these will be used for, these funds. They are already included in the proposed fiscal '23 budget.
Thank you. Any questions from council members regarding these itemized lists? All right, Ms. Manonin?
Thank you. So we're going to begin with the governmental funds. Again, Angela Manonin, Budget Manager. So today, we're really just going to go over any changes that have happened since our last meeting in March. So our goals are to discuss high-level changes since our last fiscal year '22, '23 operations budget meeting since March 3rd. Also, direct -- has direction from -- on the operations and maintenance budget from the council, and also, please make a motion when providing directions, so there's no confusion. So changes since we last met, we reestablished the fleet services department. So what this did was it moved all the general fund departments, vehicle maintenance, and fuel budgets to this department, because they manage it anyways, so it just made more sense to be in one spot. The fuel budgets did increase $218,000 since our last meeting in the general fund. That's due to fuel costs and the unpredictability of what they might be next year. Other changes in the budget was the ARPA funding has been added for the municipal code update, the unfunded court mandates, and also the permit process enhancements. The contingency budget increased to match the 3% limit, so prior it was at $1 million. Now it's $1,988,000, and again, this can't be used without council's approval. VERF did have a big change, so we increased the VERF budget by $900,000. This is due to supply chain issues. This will allow the fiscal year '24 vehicles to be ordered in the third quarter of fiscal year '23, even though they won't be delivered or paid for in fiscal year '24. We need to have the money available to get ahead of the line to hopefully get the vehicles before the 18 months. So the build date for most cars, the cutoffs between March and June, and so by moving the fiscal year '24 budget up, it puts us in this time bracket, and hopefully gets us -- gets the vehicles to us quick.
And let me just add one other thing on that. So you already previously funded the VERF, so this is just authorizing us to make the commitment to purchase the vehicles earlier because of the supply chain issues. So we don't anticipate purchasing them, but in government finance, you can't commit future funds if it's not budgeted for another fiscal year. So that's the purpose of that.
Yep. And so that's kind of a big change. So before I go on, is there any questions on the VERF change?
Please go ahead.
Okay. So there's a couple changes that you'll see in the next -- next time we meet, maybe hopefully in May. One increase -- one is an increase to the employee's salary to reflect increases that can be applied to more than one fiscal year. So the city manager's budget increased $8,000, and the city clerk budget increased $17,000 with a total of $25,000. And that's really just to change the date of implementation to March, when the review is, instead of July, where I had it budgeted. So that's the change there. And then we'll update any CIP changes you approved today, and also any ARPA changes you approved today. And also, since the packet went out, we received the final ad valorem revenues, which is the property tax revenues, and actually increased for the general fund by $150,000, so it's a total of $2 million. Property tax expected for Boulder City next year, and the redevelopment property taxes also went to up $275,000, up to 1.2 million. And the city manager also has a proposed change to the final budget.
Excuse me, Ms. Manonin, can you explain why the RDA revenue increased so greatly?
Since -- well, I knew our initial estimate was low, but I was waiting till the final came through, but it does include Storybrooke. It is new homes that's in there, so it's increasing because of the values of those homes.
Right. I think that's the major difference, is that even though these are residential homes, the law prevents us from putting that money into our general fund, because somehow that land wound up in the redevelopment agency, so it goes into that account rather than paying for a police fire, those types of things. Thank you.
The other proposed change, as you know, we've been in labor negotiations with our eight bargaining units, and those agreements are not finalized yet, but we would like to put in the budget a cost of living increase of 3% for our 54 nonrepresented positions in the city, and that total cost would be about $177,000 to the general fund, and it's about $214,000 total, which among the other funds, including municipal court, airport, utilities, and RDA, so that would make up that $214,707 total, which we can accommodate in the budget.
Okay. And that's really all the changes I have for all the governmental funds at this time since we last met in March, so open to any questions anyone might have.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Along the lines of what you were just talking about, Mr. Manager, that, you know, we also are going through, right, the compensations, the class study. How does that fit in, you know, because we are working on our budget right now, but then we're also are looking at, you know, so where does -- how does this all line up for us?
That's a great question. So the compensation and classification study, we had the final presentation of the plan to you. So in those labor negotiation meetings with bargaining units, we are sharing that with them to gauge their interest in implementing those expanded step plans, so it's contingent on getting their buy-in on the step plans. And then I would anticipate, if we can do that, we would bring the plan as-is to you for adoption, so then that would institute the new pay ranges and new step plans. However, if we need to revise anything in the compensation study, we could do that dependent on the negotiations, but we have them scheduled through May, so we'll have to do that at a later time, and everyone would still be what they're currently at now. No one would be experiencing a reduction, so even if we had the new ranges in place, the 3% would still apply for those positions.
And then as far as timing goes with when, you know, the budget comes in and when that finally gets approved, I guess that's kind of also my question is, if we're still having to go back and forth in those discussions about -- over the class and comp, yet we need to move forward with the budget as state law, you know, demands, how do we, you know, how do we deal with that situation if we end up there?
Well, we've identified areas in the budget that can accommodate that, so we feel confident that we can accommodate that in the budget.
All right, thank you.
I think, you know, I have the same question as Councilmember Adams, that, you know, we're frequently told that if it's not in the budget, it can't be spent. So this doesn't appear that it's in the budget now, so I guess I have that same question. If we're not doing something in the budget now, how does that come forward once the contracts are known?
Are we talking about the implementation of, like, bringing positions to a new minimum? Implementation of the compensation study?
Well, we don't know what the negotiations are going to bring about at this point, so it's impossible to put a figure into the budget at this time, but we know, or at least we fervently hope, that there will be contracts that are agreed to. How does that get handled in the budget if we don't do it during this process before May 25th?
Most likely, what we would do for anything that's not in wage line items or other areas where it's currently authorized to be spent, we would bring that to the council for your approval through the contingency or moving of other funds.
Okay.
So it would come before the council for you to make that change.
So there would be a change in the budget?
Correct.
The contingency is part of the budget, so there's a million?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight thousand.
Okay, so that's what that money is for, then, anticipation?
It could be potentially used for that. I mean, we try to have a contingency line every year for unknown things that occur, and that would possibly be the use of it this year. I mean, we have a more better chance of having to need it and use it, but that's kind of a traditional, you know, area that we always try to budget money in every year, just for things that we can't foresee happening. But because of this current situation, and if that develops and happens, then that would probably be the resource we would look to.
And what was the amount of the contingency in the current fiscal year?
$1 million.
I'm sorry?
Sorry. $1 million. We haven't used any of it, though.
Okay. Thank you.
So this brings us to the budget calendar. Here we are, April 7th, at a special meeting. April 15th next week, I'll send the tentative budget to the state, and depending on how today's meeting goes, we'll either vacate the 419 placeholder, and like Diane said, we have other opportunities to meet if there's small items to -- we could bring them to a council meeting, or however you guys decide. And then on May 24th, we'll have our final adoption meeting, and I'll submit to the state by June 1st. So again, just a reminder, May 24th changes. Super hard to implement, because we'd have to have a public hearing, again, to make And that wraps up my governmental, unless anyone has any other questions.
Again, I would reiterate what Ms. Manonin has said. This is the opportunity on these types of funds. If there are any questions, comments, recommendations for changes, this appears to be the time to do that. Anyone have any such comments? Thank you.
Thanks. Do you want?
You're still on.
I know. Do you want me to sit -- item number two is still going to be me, so I didn't know if you want me to sit down or come back.
No, we can move on to item number two.
Okay. So item number two is the propriety fund changes. Really, since our last meeting, there has been no changes. The only changes have been in the utilities fund to add additional budget to the fuel, the air -- and the airport also for fuel. So the airport budget increased 1,300 for fuel. The electric fuel budget increased $13,000. The water fuel budget increased $9,000. The wastewater fuel budget increased $7,500. And so operating, that's all that changed. There's the CIP projects and the ARPA, which will come up in another line item, which is a lot of changes, but that's the only operation changes. So if anyone has any questions, here to answer them.
Questions or comments? Please proceed.
Okay. And that's really all I have for proprietary. That's.
And again, I do think we need, you know, to make it clear that we have other items coming up that are clearly within both the governmental and the proprietary funds. We're just not there yet on those particular items.
Yes, and then whatever you guys discussed today and have decided, I will reflect them in the budget that's presented to you at the next meeting.
All right. Again, any questions on item number two regarding proprietary funds? All right, we'll move to item number three, then. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, our real estate contracts manager, Brock Armentraut, will be going over the master fee schedule with you and the several changes that have occurred since you saw it last.
I like how he uses the word "several." It's more than several, but we'll go over those. When we met last March to review the initial presentation of the budget and fee schedule, I went over the history of this project. To summarize briefly for those watching, the purpose of the effort was to compile all fees that the city charges into one master fee schedule that is reviewed each budget cycle and adopted concurrently with the budget each May. The goal is to improve our overall transparency to our citizens with the single resource for all city departments to be able to use and provide, and for residents to view however they want to get it in print, online, et cetera. Previously, as you probably are very well aware, fees when presented to city council for adjustment were done piecemeal across many decades. As we were compiling this list, we discovered one fee was only last revised back in 1977, that being the bicycle license permit. The planning and zoning fees were last revised back in the 1990s, and our parks and facilities fees were just earlier in the 2000s. As a result of this effort, there were many effort -- or many opportunities for the different department heads to review the fees that have been adopted over the many decades so that they could identify any potential adjustments or eliminations that needed to be made. And a secondary goal of this overall project was to improve that review process, so that as we went through this effort each year, we would have it well in hand, and that future adjustments in future years likely would be very few. Since the presentation of the original draft, several changes have been made, and even since the publication of your packet, staff has continued to review and made some additional recommended changes, and I'll go over those as well. In your packet, for both the parks and facilities fee table and special events fee table, we added two additional tables to show those various fees side by side, so that resident fees, non-resident fees, and either nonprofit or commercial enterprise fees would be shown side by side to make it easier to see the benefits that our residents receive over nonresidents and nonprofits and commercial enterprises. We've also drafted a proposed policy statement to explain why city residents enjoy reduced rates when using our city parks and facilities. For the parks and facilities table, clarifying statement has been added to the various section headings to make it clear that city parks and ball fields are available for no fee as a first-come, first-served basis. It's only when they want to reserve a specific facility that they would pay the fee. And like the mayor had mentioned, he liked to play baseball when he was younger. I was that same kid, and we felt it necessary to add that clarification, so that residents wouldn't think they had to reserve a field just to play a pickup game if the field happened to be available. The utility rate sheet, though--
Mr. Armentraut, I would just like to make note, though, unless you climb the fence, you're probably not going to play a game.
I'm not aware that they're locked.
Hmm.
Oh.
Yeah, they're locked.
I guess when you and I were kids, they weren't locked.
They weren't locked. Nope, you could go down, have a good time, be a kid, and now you can't.
Yeah, I think you and I both can't climb fences anymore. At least it's not recommended. Well, I guess it's something for Mr. Hall to look at. In the prior iteration, the utility rate sheet was just one tab in the book, and we broke that out into individual tabs. It's toward the end of the publication now, so each utility has its own tab sheet, and they're located at the end of the master fee exhibit. And one of the handouts that we received was to replace the water service charge rate table. One of the changes since publication, we confirmed with S&amp;W A that even though they had raised the service charges that they charged their member entities, to date, they haven't charged Boulder City. So until such time that they decide to, we're not going to pass along that charge, since we're not paying it either. And so the review -- the revised sheet that's in your packet reflects that. In the first section of the master rate table, we did eliminate the municipal court fees. Those are all governed and regulated by the Nevada Administrative Code and the Nevada revised statutes, and subject to change at any time, and we have no say in the matter, other than through our elected officials to try to get them to do something different. As such, we're adding a reference in the publication that those fees are set by the state, subject to change at their pleasure, but we will still include the fees that the state adopts in our master fee publication, so the residents can still see what those fees are, even though we have no control over how they are set. In the special events table, for the reimbursement rate for public safety personnel, we did use the step-five salary range, but we used the existing fiscal year '22 salaries and not what we thought might be the fiscal year '23. And so that rate has been changed and lowered in your fee table. And also in the special events table in that same area, we discovered that two of my fingers went faster than the others, and I had reversed some numbers in the fire department apparatus reimbursement rate, and so we corrected that. As a note, that is still lower than what we're currently charging, so it's a rate reduction in that area. In the reproduction fees table, we did eliminate a second entry for photo reproduction in the police fees, and added a new digital media fee to replace it, so it covers all And as I learned from there, the city does not take pictures with an old-fashioned camera and film anymore. They're all digital, and the purpose of that fee was to make reproductions from film negatives. Since we no longer have that, we're not even sure where we could get one reproduced. That's why we're replacing it with a digital media fee, so that if someone requested it and didn't want just a photocopy, we could give it to them on a USB drive, or DVD or CD, 21, the type of media. Tentatively, we have also added in the very bottom of the reproduction fee table under the finance section, a proposed 2% transaction fee for credit card use. This current fiscal year, we're on target to have been charged by the various credit card processing companies approximately $320,000 to $350,000 for credit card fees. That's on top of whatever was charged for the service that the resident paid for, but it's a fee that the city eats and it's not passed along to the consumer. We are proposing a 2% transaction fee. That's the average of what the city's been charged, depending on the credit card that's being used, whether it be MasterCard, Visa, Discover, American Express, and so on. However, we are still investigating ways to either reduce it or not even make the -- to either reduce it or not even make that request altogether. We're in conversations with the companies that do our credit card processing to see if we can reduce that fee so it's a set fee instead of a variable fee and to make it nice and low. And if we can get it really low, we'll rescind our request and not request that you consider that in the fee schedule. There have been some misspellings that were corrected, and unfortunately, it's one of those things where finance looks at it over and over and over again, and at some point, you're, I suddenly think that's how you spell the word "Boulder," B-O-L-D-E-R, one that's not supposed to be that way. So, I'd like to thank Roger Hall publicly for his spell check ability. He found a few things where we had reversed letters or added an extra T or misspelled the word "Boulder", and so, those corrections have been made. And since you received your packet, there's some additional things that we would like to be considered to be removed or changed. Under the special events fees, at the very bottom, there's a miscellaneous additional fee section. We had a request to have a charge for tables and chairs that we would provide to the special events, and I believe it was set for $2 per table or chair. Mr. Hall has asked that we not consider that for this budget cycle. He'd like to study that further to see if there's a more appropriate dollar number and to get a better idea about what other entities charge for them to use city tables and chairs for special events. So, we're going to be removing that from the next iteration when you see the final version in May or at a special meeting if we have another one between now and then. Under the public works development fee section, we're adding a fee called alternative energy generation plan review, and the rate for that would be just their standard application fee. The purpose of that fee is to cover staff time as a review request by people who like to have rooftop solar to make sure that it can integrate with our grid and is designed properly and so on. And if there's more questions on the public works fees, Mr. Literals here to answer those questions. And the last change that we've made internally that will come to you at the final version would be for the cemetery fees. Public Works has requested that even though they're showing the annual 2.5% increase, that we just round all the numbers up to the nearest dollar. So, instead of being dollars and cents, it'd just be whole dollars. And also, that we consider amending the disinterment rate for burials to be increased from roughly $1,900 to around $3,000 and that for cremains or cremated remains be increased to $1,500. While we don't do disinterments very often, they can only think of three in the last five years, it's a very disturbing activity. Plus, you would think it wouldn't take that much effort, but it's actually very employee-intensive to get it prepared to do a disinterment, both paperwork emotionally as well as coordinating with other agencies since once a body's placed in the ground, the city just can't go dig it up without having other public entities present to supervise the process. Now, so their request is to range, change that to $3,000 and $1,500, which also brings us in line roughly with other similar cemeteries. And again, Mr. Literals here to answer any questions if you have specific questions about that. So, after you discuss this, if there's discussion, if you do have changes you'd like to make, I do request, like we did for the budget, that you make a motion and direct staff what to do so that when we bring it back as a consensus at council. And as you're also aware, you can vote to in May to not have any changes. However, there are some things that we really do have to change, and that's specifically in the copy and reproduction section. There are some fees in there that, for things that the city can no longer do, we don't have the ability to do some of those activities, either a type of copy or a type of activity. And one of the fee categories is something that we're legally not able to do. That is charge for city council packets. So, again, there are some things that we have to do, but if there's other fees you'd rather not change, again, just make that a motion, and we'll bring it back as you wish. So, I'm ready to answer any questions, and the department heads are also behind me, and they can answer any questions about their specific area of expertise and why they did or didn't change a fee.
Thank you. Questions or comments? You know, I think this idea of having a schedule like this is an excellent idea. It gives the public an opportunity to quickly be able to find these things. I don't like the process of having an entire schedule with multiple changes, up, down, eliminated, added, and having to do one vote. As was just pointed out, some of these things are actually required by statute. I would prefer to see that separate so that we understand those specific items, there's no option on. The other thing that I don't see within this really is any justification for the majority of these increases that we're seeing, and I find that very troubling. I know that the answer will be that, well, everything's going up. Fees haven't been adjusted for a long time, so let's go ahead and increase those fees. That's one way to make sure that we continue the upward inflation pressure. When you have a house fire, pouring gasoline on it is a good way to make it hotter, not cooler. And what I see with all of these fees, again, is we're just simply increasing them because there's no information within the packet on why these increases are occurring. As people live here, they pay property tax, they pay sales tax. There are other types of revenue that our residents pay to support the functions of the city, and those increase. We fund, for instance, our parks and recs programs out of our general fund, and these fees come back into that general fund. They don't directly support the parks and rec activities. So, as I look at the increases we're seeing, the pressure that people have been under over the past two years from the pandemic, what I see is a real enthusiasm of folks to get out, enjoy our community, and here we are raising fees with at least no apparent justification for doing so other than, well, they haven't been raised in a long time. Let's go ahead and increase them. So, I'm very much against doing that, especially on a blanket basis like this. If there's a particular fee that needs to go up for an identified reason, I would prefer to see that broken out separately. But to just say, as I look through here, all of the new fees that are being imposed, all of the increases that are being imposed, and I do appreciate staff taking the time to look through all of these and find the ones that can be eliminated that are no longer necessary or those that are required by statute. But no, I don't support doing it this way. And with regard to the utility, the water service fee, that process was not a good process. We have a utility advisory committee. It's essential that those folks have an opportunity to look at these things, and that can be said for, we have a parks and rec committee, we have an airport committee, we have all these advisory committees, but I don't see where there's been an effort to have those committees look at these things and give their input as to whether they're required or not. So, as far as...
I just want to honor the statement regarding a blanket increase. That would not be possible.
Well, that's the way it's being presented, though.
No, I think staff's intent in presenting this is just to show you what the current fee is and what we're looking at in proposing to, based on, you know, increases of staff time or whatever the justification may be. For each of these fees, there are different resolutions. They would have to, you have to explain the legal basis for the fee in each resolution. You know, there wouldn't be a way to blanketly increase all these fees. This is just presenting it to council so that is council even interested in looking at increases for these fees? It's more of a just getting direction from you before we start that process. It would absolutely not be possible to blanketly increase these fees. That would not be possible legally speaking, but...
Well, I do understand that, but that's not the way the schedule's being presented. And that's why I mentioned earlier, my preference would be some of these things that are statutorily required, that we get those in front of us as being statutorily required so that we understand, well, okay, that one we can't do much about. But we're being, I mean, there are dozens, if not hundreds, of fees on here. And yes, I do understand, they all came about through different resolutions, different considerations, but that's not what we're being asked to look at. And if what we're being asked to look at is to go through this entire list and put a yes or a no or a maybe or I'm not sure next to each one, well, you know, that would be my motion is that we put this off to another time so that we can have more opportunity to look at this rather than just the past five days. Councilmember Jorgensen, I'm not quite completed yet on my comments here. Going back to the proposed increase in utility rate for the water service charge, and it's also been discussed about a rate increase for electric. You know, the meetings that the utility advisory committee should be having leading up to this point to provide input to us did not occur. Again, this year, did not occur. These are large amounts of money that we're talking about, large amounts that we're asking our residents to pay for, and we haven't had that review process that I think is essential to it. I do understand that this water service fee was withdrawn as of yesterday when new information came out, and I think it's important that something like that, this contract we have with Southern Nevada Water Authority, be thoroughly reviewed. We just had appointed or allowed for, authorized, the use of an outside firm to look at our utility contracts. And without having a clear understanding of what it is, that's how we wind up with these proposals of, well, let's go ahead and increase it, and then we find out, well, wait, SNWA doesn't charge us that because we have a different contract. So, that would be another motion I would make. And with regard to the utility fund, again, I understand for accounting purposes, it's been a very good idea to separate these out into the four different funds, electric, water, wastewater, and landfill, but it is one proprietary fund, and we have a significant amount of federal dollars that are coming into that fund. And once again, I don't see how that is clearly reflected in the way we're going about evaluating rate increases. So, Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess when I look at this, I look at it just a little bit differently. I understand what he's saying, but I felt like there is a justification if a lot of these have not been changed in 20-plus years, that it was time to look at it. I mean, we're a historic city, but our rates don't have to be reflective of the 1930s because that's not effective government. So, I feel a little bit differently about that. I feel like it is time for us to look at it and adjust where needed. I know many of you have gone and you've looked at what is being charged for those specific services elsewhere in the valley, not even somewhere else in the United States, here in the valley. Granted, we're not providing everything the valley's providing, but we are providing some services that are very similar. And so, I do think that with the cost of hiring even a lifeguard that we've talked about or the cost of hiring anyone nowadays, if you can get them, and with the cost of products to be able to finish some of these things or maintain it, the cost of toilet paper, let's be honest, for park and rec. It gets down to the little tiny things that if we do not keep our fees at least at a level that we can maintain what we're offering, it's not, it's not good government, to be honest. Then we are not using the taxpayers' dollars the way that we could be using them to improve our roads, to improve other parts of the community for everyone. So, I guess that's how I feel.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
First, I wanted to acknowledge that it appears that a number of people put in a lot of hours going over the previous fee schedule in order to come up with a set of fees in their departments, their areas, in order to either eliminate fees, raise fees, or keep them the same. What I didn't see here was any kind of sweeping adjustment in any direction. What I saw was a chart that would give us an idea of all the fees the city charges and why the decision was made to increase them, decrease them, eliminate them, or keep them the same. I do appreciate, we're not just talking about this generalized term of inflation. I like the fact that you wrote the equivalent value of $1 in 2007 is worth $1.36 today, and maybe as we watch our watches, it's a little bit more than that. And I support the department's ability to look at reasonable fees. We still can charge for these services. You know, we charge non-residents for certain services. We charge others a really low amount. I mean, I looked at one in particular of paying, charging $4 for a dog license. I mean, 20-something years ago, I was paying that. So, I do not have issues with that. I recognize there are charges that we can't control, like the water service rate charges that SNW charges to us, and I see that that's been, that's been put off by now. If there was one or several in particular, I could understand addressing it, but I'm not interested in throwing out the baby, as they say, with the bathwater. So, like I said, I truly appreciated the amount of effort that went in to explain why each one was changed. I appreciate your comments about what was overlooked, added. I have another question, which is, this needs to be included with the budget schedule, correct? With the budget information that we file in May?
Well, it's not provided to the state, but it needs to be done concurrently with the budget.
Yes, that's our plan.
What?
That is our plan, to bring it with the budget in May for that.
To be concurrent with the budget?
Yes.
So, projecting changes that require meetings in July or August or reevaluation of certain structures wouldn't work with our current budget process. I mean, they'd either have to be left out or whatever. So, I think if there is a particular line item, from my perspective, I don't see anything in particular, but if there is something, we'd address that. But I am not in favor of taking this out and having it ripped apart and start over again. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess just for some clarity here, what we would be approving of essentially that goes, you know, as we do this along with the budget, would be what the current rate is, right? Because if it was stated that we have to, you know, resolutions would have to be passed, and we'd have to look at individual increases on an individual basis, that hasn't occurred yet. Is that, am I correct?
That's accurate. It's my understanding that this proposal was just to get your direction of whether we should even pursue increases for these certain types of fees and to consolidate all of the fees in one fee schedule so that it was more transparent. That was my understanding of this. Legally speaking, you have to go through a process to update. You know, you can't just put all the fees in one and, you know, collectively increase fees like that.
What would happen at the meeting is there would be a resolution for the copy fees, a resolution on the agenda for the community development fees, one for the pool and facility fees, and so on. But it would be on the same agenda, just individual resolutions for each one, as she just described.
Yes, you'd have to repeal conflicting resolutions, so you would need legal language. You'd have to cite the authority or what the fee's based on, et cetera. So, it wouldn't be just, it would have to be individual resolutions. You could do all the resolutions at one time, sure, but each one would have to be separate. You know, we'd have to look at our advisory committees if it's within the scope to present to them first. We'd have to... to present to them first, we'd have to go through that. So this, this was just an initial, let's put all the fees in one place for you to review. These is, these are the fees that we've determined are out of date, need adjusting, and that's what we're looking to get direction from council today on. It definitely would not have any legal effect to increase the fee automatically. It's just directing staff to look at the proposed fee increase and bring it and follow whatever requirements are, are provided.
So moving forward from today, based on your direction on this item, then we would start preparing the resolutions to bring to you in May, and you would pass them all at that meeting, but you would be taking votes on each resolution?
It seems like it would be a meeting in and of itself, based on what I'm looking at. So I guess that would be kind of where my head is at, is that certainly this direction as, as a, having a master fee, absolutely, we, we need to be moving in that direction. So, and kudos to everybody for all the hard work in getting this together and putting this there and everything, because that's absolutely an appropriate direction. You know, where I do start to get concerned, you know, we have, there is a, a lot that we are having to try and wrap our heads around here with this budget, and then, you know, needing to look at every single individual fee, and as was stated, you know, if there are areas, you know, where we have advisory committees where they could help provide some insight, you know, or just so we can, just so that we can actually see, you know, where is, where is the need and the justification? Because it's one thing to just, you know, say on here, you know, to, to meet, to meet this need, or, you know, it, it can be, it's helpful for us, and I think for the community as a whole, to actually see those things discussed, right? And they, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, each individual thing in discussion, but, you know, kind of larger areas as a whole where, you know, these park fees and the different uses and, and talking about that, you know, that helps us and the public to see, you know, what is going on, why do we need these costs? So it's not just us saying, it's, you know, it's true, you know, we say so, therefore it is, kind of a thing. And I'm not saying that that's what's happening. I'm just saying, you know, to, to do our job and to make sure that the residents are, are there with us, you know, they're going to want to see, to see that themselves. So as far as what I think would be, you know, great is, is for us to move forward with where we're at currently, and then over time, as, as we look at these things, you know, address these more in a, you know, a methodical approach as it comes to council, you know, each area, we can look at where the needs are most, where, where we need to meet certain needs, where the priority is, I'm trying to say. And then, you know, just kind of move, and so then hopefully by, over time, we'll have gotten to that point where we've done this, rather than trying to look at it all in one meeting at one time with several different resolutions and trying to parse all of that information together at once. I think that's just a little bit of a big ask for, for all of us. I know it is personally for me, but I think it's a big ask for the community as well to try and, and get them up to speed as well. So that's where my, that's where my head is at in this direction at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox?
Yeah. Yeah, I think the increases are, are needed. You know, when it's costing us more money to provide these services than it, than it's bringing in, it just doesn't make sense. You know, it's, it has been a long time since these fees have been raised, and I think it is time. You know, I, I look at it as a, you know, I, I have to look at my prices, you know, weekly at the restaurant, and if I'm not keeping up with what it's costing me to provide that food for you guys, I'd, I'd go broke. So, you know, it definitely is a necessity to, to reevaluate everything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Couple of responses, I guess, for me. You know, one, the Councilmember Bridges had commented about the SNWA fee is being put off. It's not being put off, it never existed. Staff had had some misinformation regarding that particular fee, that SNWA charges other entities, and had assumed that that fee then applied to Boulder City. It doesn't apply to Boulder City. So it's not being put off, it doesn't exist. With regard to this, well, you know, we have to charge more because it costs us more, the taxpayers pay more pretty much every single year. Not only that, but our general fund benefits from the land leases that we have, which brings more revenue into the city on a consistent basis. So this idea that, well, you know, we know that this costs more, so you're going to have to pay more, that's a false choice to be making. We pay for things like our parks with general fund revenue. That comes from a variety of sources, and many of those sources increase, whether it's because of a new land lease, or an escalation clause in a land lease, or an increase in property tax, or inflation that drives up the cost of goods so that you pay more in sales tax. Those are all increases that already occur. And this idea that the only services we provide to our residents are those that they have to pay for directly, that's simply not how government works. It's not how the budget process works. People are paying more all of the time, whether they're paying for a specific service or not, because their property taxes went up, because their sales tax was more expensive. Those types of increases are already occurring, and to then come back to the residents and say, you know what, we got more money from these other revenues, but we're going to charge you more because, well, you understand things are more expensive. That's just simply not good budgeting. The other thing that's missing from this is any discussion of how much revenue are we talking about if every one of these suggested changes occurs? We don't know that. That doesn't seem to be part of the equation either. How much money are we actually talking about? Well, we don't know, but we'll just increase things and, and, yeah, that should cover it. Again, that's not a good budget process at all. Another problem I see with this budget process, this is now the fifth time I've gone through this, when we don't say anything, when we say, well, we'll look at things later, or there'll be resolutions that come later, or there'll be other things that we can change before the budget's adopted, that doesn't happen. My experience has been that this meeting, if we don't make decisions at this meeting, the decisions will not be made. We will be put in a position where we will get to May 24th, and it will be, here's the budget, time to approve it, sign off on it, everything happens, we get told for the rest of the year, we can't make changes. This is the time to make, make some changes, or at least to say, we plan to make some changes prior to that May 24th meeting. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the idea that this is the time to make changes. I also appreciated Adam's saying that there is a possibility that we could chunk this and look at it with a little bit more time. As far as, I do feel like these need to be reevaluated as far as fees go. It's been too long for us to not have fee increases. If we do have advisory committees within a certain group, could those changes go back to those advisory committees just to bounce it off one more group and then come back with the reasoning behind why, so that when it comes before us, for us to meet it as a resolution with each of the different fees, there's reasoning behind it, and then we have a greater understanding of why we would be maybe making these changes? As opposed to just looking at this and not really having as much? Although I do have to say what Councilwoman Bridges said about your explanation on the side, those are wonderful, and I do appreciate those. It helped me to understand why we need to have something of this nature and have it looked at. So I guess if I, would that, would that hamper in any way the budget process if we did it that way?
I'm just thinking out loud about which committees would go to.
We would have to do it that way. Legally speaking, if, if a committee's resolution scope requires that these types of things be reviewed by them first, we are legally obligated to present it to them first. So, yes, I mean, absolutely. And that, and I think that was the intent, at least my understanding, because I, I wasn't consulted about legally how we would carry out the proposed fee increase. I think my understanding was this was always just a presentation, staff's effort to consolidate this in one place so that you could see it and explain what each was the last time it's been updated. So, and then the goal, I think, in the future, maybe it doesn't happen this fiscal year, but it would be that the fees would be considered every fiscal year so that we can, so that it doesn't happen where you have a bicycle permit fee that doesn't get updated since 1977, you know? So that's, you know, that's really the goal here, definitely, was not to, for open meeting law purposes, the public has to be on notice that certain fees are increasing. I mean, this was definitely never intended to be some blanket. This is just direction, is there any interest in even pursuing this before we spend staff time going down that road?
So we're looking for a motion, is what we're looking for?
And just one other thing. So, for example, so the Utility Advisory Committee, in their resolution, they are tasked with reviewing rates. They reviewed rates yesterday, but there were no changes.
Well, actually, the, the request from staff yesterday was to remove the discussion of rates for their meeting. And, and we have, whether they discussed it or not, we have nothing in front of us regarding that discussion.
But we can do whatever the council would like regarding this item. We can definitely take it to all of the advisory boards that would apply and just do the statutory changes that we need to do, and perhaps if we could remove things like audio tapes that don't exist and items like that that are antiquated, that would work, and then we could take a longer process of involving the public and the advisory boards.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to make a motion that we keep the idea of the fee schedule. We go back to the individual departments. We have meetings if there are advisory boards, with our advisory boards showing the changes to our fee schedule and determining why there is a need for that, and then bring that back with the explanation and the change to the council for us to be able to look at. Second?
In discussion of that motion, I'm not sure that there's an awareness of what the calendar is right now. Today is April 7th. That gives us approximately six weeks before the budget needs to be approved. So if, if the idea is that this is going to be done by that time, or are you suggesting that over a longer period of time this be done?
No. Yeah, I believe that's what I just asked you, right? Does it have to be done this budget cycle?
No, it would not be legally possible.
That it wouldn't be legally. So that is not my intent. My intent is that we do keep working on this and that we do come back with the information so that the public and ourselves are well versed on why we would be making these changes and what it was before, what it would be now, why, do you feel this is the price? And meet with the advisory boards if you have them, and make sure that they give their recommendations also.
Well, again, the concern I have with the way that you phrase your motion is then these revenues should not be part of the budget process. What we're here today to do is discuss the budget. So if the idea of the motion is that these would not be done, the process would not be done before the approval of the budget is needed, then for purposes of the budget discussion, these revenues could not be considered then. Is that, is that the point of your motion?
Well, what we could do, if I could just add something, that we could start the process of reviewing, but there could be a motion saying that if any of these fees increases, which I know there's equal amount of decreases, but the increases would not be effective in the upcoming budget, the upcoming budget year.
That's what I'm asking for clarity.
So, so that could be a motion that, you know, we, we.
Well, we have a motion in a second. I'm, I'm asking for clarity of what that motion is so that I can understand whether to support it or not support it.
Okay.
I think that that would move it past this budget process into the following year.
Yes, unless, unless you decide to go with what the proposal is today, then that needs to be the case.
Okay.
Of not including it in this budget. We can do the cleanup, we can get rid of the antiquated items, but not do anything with the other fees.
Right, I think since she said legally speaking, that it needed to be done this way, that it would be best for us to go through that process and bring it back the next budget year, not do it this budget year per se, but have it in place for the next.
That would be fine, yes.
And again, that, that was the clarity I'm looking for, because that was actually my original discussion about this, and not that we rip this apart or do any of that, but that we have an opportunity to put this through a process that it deserves. So with that clarity, any other discussion regarding the motion?
I just had a clarification comment, Mayor, if I may?
Please.
The, the two committees that potentially review this would be the Parks and Recreation Committee, which are the parks fees, special event fees, and the swimming pool fees, and maybe the airport, I'm not sure.
With all due respect, Mayor and City Council, may I interject?
I, I believe we're getting away from our motion, but yes.
Yes, I think the direction we're seeking from you is whether the fee schedule should be a part of the budget process in general. We can't sweepingly in one mo, in, in one item increase all these fees, and it was legally speaking, and it was my understanding that we were just getting direction from you. So I, we shouldn't speculate as to which committees would review these things. I mean, this is just getting direction from you, should the fee schedule be included in the budget process going forward? That's legally all we can do. That's, the, to update fees requires notice and public input, and you can't just update things in a blanket, that wouldn't be possible. So I think there might have been a misunderstanding from finance staff as to what was legally possible, but, well, I think the, the direction here seems to be conflicting.
And again, we are getting away from our motion. The motion essentially is that these things will be further considered. Is that correct, Councilmember Jorgensen? So that's what the motion is right now. Councilmember Adams?
Just for everyone's clarity, because it got a little jumbled up, could you restate the motion as to what it is so we can all follow along and we'll go from there?
Sure, thank you. I move that staff continues looking at the fee schedules, and that each department goes back to it and puts down, if they need to meet with an advisory committee, they meet with their advisory committees, and then assess your fees and go through why it's either being eliminated, adjusted, or a new fee is being added, and then come back with that information to council.
So, that's the motion. Councilmember Adams? Any further discussion?
I, I guess the question I would have is, well, does there need to be a second first before we discuss? It's already been second.
We have a second.
We just restate it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm confusing myself here. My, I guess my question is, I think part of it was, you know, do we move forward with this as part of the, the budget process as it currently stands, where we're not making any changes, we're just saying, here is the current fee list? I'm just, I just want to make, I'm just wanting to be clear here. Or is it just that this, we will not move forward this time?
I thought we legally cannot do that.
Well, just.
I was just clarifying it. So within your motion, you had stated you wanted the advisory committees to look at that. I was just clarifying that legally, we're already required to put it before the advisory committees, if, if it's within their scope. That, that's what I was just clarifying for purposes of the motion, and that's why I was saying, as far, if, if there was a proposal to approve these fee increases today, that is not legally possible. So maybe I could ask clarification from finance staff to, to clarify what direction that they're seeking from the city council, because I don't think we're on the same page legally speaking.
What we were asking today is if you did want to go with this proposed plan of the changes, then we would start preparing resolutions and doing what's legally necessary to accomplish that goal. If you want us to continue looking at. to accomplish that goal, if you want us to continue looking at the fees, we can definitely do that, and we can create a publication that shows the current fees, and they're already passed, so we would not need any action to create a publication listing the fees.
If I could just add one other thing, one of the options that Mr. Armentraut mentioned was leaving fees as they currently are, and just going forward with that, but the, what he was requesting, and I guess the city attorney would have to opine, that if a fee no longer is, is possible because we don't do the service, or it's obsolete, then we would remove those, so this was basically a cleanup operation to, and, and also a gathering operation, so that we would be able to have one source that someone could look at for any type of event or fee that, that, that a, a person wants to know about, they would have a, a one-place document in the end that they could look at to get information on Boulder City fees and costs of doing business, but while doing the process, since we were gathering, and it was a very labor-intensive operation, and Mr. Armentraut was spearheaded that effort and met with department directors and many, many people over the last, since January, really, and like we said, things have been changing up even until today, so, you know, if the council is happy with the direction we're going, but doesn't feel comfortable with our recommendations, they could say that for us to continue the process, but le, not, not make any adjustments up or down, because there was a lot of downward fee adjustments in here too, and I don't know, I guess the attorney, city attorney would have to opine on whether we could eliminate fees that are no longer possible to charge because we don't do the service anymore, so that's kind of where we're at today, that was what we were looking for guidance from the council on.
And apologies for the disconnect, again, I, I was under misunderstanding of what action was being requested by the city council today, and because legally speaking, even to eliminate fees, if there's a resolution that authorizes that fee, you have to repeal it, or-
At the May meeting.
Finance director's clarifying that they would propose that resolution at the May meeting, but that's what I'm saying, is we, we would have to bring those resolutions back to you, and if we, and even if there's a proposed to be eliminated fee, and that is within the scope of an advisory committee, we'd have to go through that route first, so it wouldn't necessarily be possible to bring it back during the May meeting, so that, just logistically speaking, only some fees may be able to be brought back to you in time for this budget, but other fees may not.
That's how I saw it.
Well, I, I think we still have Councilmember Jorgensen's motion here, which is that there will be additional work, and that what is presented to us today is not going to be enacted as part of the budget this year.
Not the changes there, but the current, yes, and then we will work on those.
Any discussion about what the motion is?
I, I have a question.
Councilmember Bridges?
It's just, would, if, the current motion, does that imply that the current fees would re- remain part of the current budget process, or would there need to be another motion to do that?
Yes, the current fees would, would remain in place.
And be part of the budget?
I, I would recommend, because due to all this discussion on this pending motion, it would be a lot clearer for the record if the motion was withdrawn and restated, that's what I would recommend.
Councilmember Jorgensen, do you wish to withdraw and restate your motion?
I will withdraw my motion, I will restate, maybe a little discussion, you would like me to include, yes, the current fees can stay in there, because it seems to me that legally speaking, since we can't change them up or down, they're going to stay in there anyhow, is that correct?
No actions required, yeah.
No action is required or needed.
I think having a fee schedule as a concept within the budget process could, there could be action on that, it hasn't been done before, so I would do think there could be action on that.
Okay, I move that we do include the fee schedule in our budget planning, but the current proposal before us needs to go back to each of the departments, like I've said before, and if they have advisory committees, it needs to go through the legal processes to be able to be brought back to us for any fee changes up or down, and so that we can look at it, and so I do not believe any fee changes at this time can be part of this year's budget process, this will need to be gone through next year and maybe added to the next one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? The motion's unanimous. With regard to the fee schedule, I will make another motion that the information that is requested from staff will include a projection of what the total revenues will be, so that we have a better understanding of how those fit into the overall budget process, anyone wishing to second that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion also is unanimous with regard to the fee schedule. Any other questions or motions anyone wishes to make with regard to the fee schedule? All right, we'll move to item number four, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, now, Keegan Luttrell, our Public Works Director, will be going over any changes to the five-year capital improvement plan, Keegan?
Good evening or afternoon, Mayor and Council, again, Keegan Luttrell, Public Works Director, as the City Manager just said, I would like to discuss any changes that have been made to our CIP since tentatively being approved on December 14th, 2021. First changes, it was actually at a council meeting here recently, were changes to the airport, due to some timing with the, the federal funding, we had to shift the beacon and high mast lighting into the rehab runway project in order to meet those federal timelines, make sure we weren't going to lose any money, we also have a new estimate for the air traffic control tower of 11.6 million, but we also found out that there's additional funding for that, and the FFAA will cover that at 100%. So the total funded from the airport fund actually went down 100, about $170,000. So this is the, the five-year plan, air, air traffic control tower, as I said, 11.6 million, the rest of the, the, everything else is the same except for the rehabilitate, the runway 15-33, that also includes the high mast lighting. And this, this is the breakdown of the five-year plan, airport's actually funding 3%. And then this is for fiscal year 23, we have the construction of the air traffic control tower, and then the, the runway project. And this is the breakdown for FAA and the airport fund for next fiscal year. And if you guys have any questions at any point, just stop me, otherwise I'll keep on going, yes?
Just wanted to know if we got all the studies done and that were needed for that to be completed or at least started this year, the tower.
I'm going to have to call in the experts for help on that one.
Good afternoon, Marissa Doo, Airport Manager, we are still in the process of completing all of our studies, that is why we're adding in the runway 1533 project, combining that with our high mast lighting, and moving forward with that, so that we can continue to use the federal monies that we have that will expire if we don't, so the, the tower project, we're still in the siting study portion of the project, we'll move on to the environmental portion once that's complete, we hope to complete that in the next month or so, and so, because we can't start with construction once environmental is done, we anticipate that that should be done by next year, so if, if it is, then we would move into the design, the finishing of the design and construction of the tower, and applying for a grant then.
It takes a year for an environmental?
Um, it can, it can actually take up to two years for the FAA to review it, they have allotted time, so.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Yes.
Can you expand on what this runway work is that you referred to?
Sure, the runway rehab will include new electrical for the runway, with fixtures for runway lights, lighted signs, the navigation equipment, we'll also be redoing our home run to the vault for the airport, so that we have dedicated, we can separate out our runway lights and our taxiway lights onto different systems, and adding a lit windsock on the south side of the airfield for runway 33.
Thank you.
Oh, it'll also include pavement rehab, just seal, seal coat and crack seal on the runway as well.
Just a resurfacing?
Just a resurfacing, it's not an extension or expansion.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions regarding the airport?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Police Department, only change that we're proposing on there is to transfer the funding from CIP number four, the sale of track 350, to General Fund, just so there's no hangups or holdups on any of their projects.
Mr. Luttrell, can you, it, it's not specific here about what that is that's being transferred?
Um, there was three projects in there, one of them was for the security cameras, access control, there was another 150 for, why am I trying to blank? Hold on one second. Yeah, so the first one was 150,000 for the security camera and electronic door access replacement and upgrade, one was the animal control property, access control for that, security gating, or security fencing, and parking for the mobile command unit, and then there was another 100,000 for police station covered parking, so out of the 400,000, 250 was being funded out of CIP four, so we're transferring that to General Fund, just in case, track 350, we don't have any money from that, we can still proceed with the police station projects.
Thank you.
Changes in the water CIP, we added 95,000 for an emergency response vehicle that can also be used day-to-day, the emergency response vehicle usually has the service body, liftgate and all that, not all of the water, water wastewater vehicles have that, and then it 'll also be fully equipped for emergency water line breaks or any other emergency water projects, so that would be funded at 95,000, and then I'll get into, there were several other projects that have been added because of ARPA. So the, the changes from December 14th, there's the large meter replacement and backflow installation for a million dollars, the design and installation of pressure-reducing valves for the twin-five water zone, and then we also renamed the, the PRV, pressure-reducing valves for the water line going down to the solar field, so that's the 14-inch line to solar field PRV construction, we have the design already in the CIP that was previously approved, and we're moving forward with selecting a consultant on that to get those designed, and then this would be, actually be the construction for 600,000. And then two others that have been added would be upgrading and replacing our fire hydrants, a lot of them are outdated, obsolete, and then also 55,000 for covered parking for our part, pump and trailer, or pipe and pump, can't even talk.
Say it really fast.
I should, three times, that's a lot of P's, pipe and trailer pump, covered parking, as most people know, if pipe sits out in the sun, it quickly turns yellow and then it cracks very easily, so we need something to store that in to preserve our assets. So those are the changes for the five-year plan, I think all of those projects, oh, this one's just broken out separately, that's the 95,000 for the vehicle, that can't be funded by ARPA. This is a breakdown of the five years, we have it front-loaded because of the ARPA And then this is the fiscal year 23, so the changes are the large meter replacement design for the PRVs for twin-five, the 14-inch line PRV construction, the fire hydrants and the covered parking, so all of those projects that were in addition to the five-year are in next year's plan. And again, the purchase of the vehicle, any questions on water?
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, just for clarification, 14-inch line, we're talking about pressure-reducing valves, we're not talking about a line out there, just the pressure-reducing valves, just wanted to make that clear, can you, with obsolete fire hydrant replacement, saying obsolete, is it that the fire hydrant no longer needs to be there, it's in an obsolete location, or is that it needs to be replaced because it's no longer functioning properly?
No longer functioning properly.
Okay, I just wanted to, just the, the word obsolete, I wasn't sure what we were saying.
If anything, we're going to add more fire hydrants, because changes have been made in the requirements years ago, that could, they could be further spaced apart, if, if we can put more in to make the fire department's job easier, we will do that with our projects.
Okay, thank you.
Again, on these pressure relief valves on the El Dorado line, is that the line to nowhere, or that's the existing line that actually delivers water?
It's the existing 14-inch line that's been in the ground for a number of years, the, the line that was recently constructed in the last couple of years is a 16-inch line.
Let's call it the line to nowhere, so we know what it is.
Okay, but yeah, this is the existing line that goes all the way down to, to the solar fields.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Wastewater, we added several projects just due to the, the ARPA funding, the first one I want to mention is not an addition, it's the concrete-lined aeration basin improvements for 600,000, that is a project that we may not need if the, we come to an agreement with SNWA to build a new treatment plant, so we're holding off on that project, we still want it to be in there, because we do need to do it at some point if we don't build a new treatment plant. This page has several changes, the Veterans Park wet well upgrade for 160,000, install a chlorine generator, upgrade the foundation and the floor at the wastewater treatment plant, it's getting to be about gravel down there, and then also SCADA improvements, the SCADA improvements allows us to monitor any overflows or alarms remotely. This is for the five-year plan.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question about the station one improvements, is this sufficient funding to get the smell away?
That is our plan, we actually, Mr. Stupitz and I have been in discussions with a couple of different consultants to do kind of a, a scheming plan, an overall plan of all of our lift stations, and then from there, we're going to be able to deep dive into doing individual plans for each of the lift stations, we figured it was going to be best to have an overall plan, how they're all connected, and how we can eliminate the odor, make them more, more efficient, so the, the first step, we're already in the works of getting a scope and fee, is an overall plan of that.
Okay, good, I know there are a lot of people who would be really happy to have that odor go away.
Yeah. And Mr. Stupitz's staff is already working on, um, some odor control ideas. Um, there's a number of methods out there right now. Um, they've tried some of the less expensive, um, less labor-intensive ideas, and they, they just haven't been working. So we're taking it a step or two further, and hopefully that can resolve that. But it's not gonna eliminate all of the odors, and that's what we're hoping when we upgrade these lift stations, that it would be eliminated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, I would just note that when you're talking about wastewater, the cliche to use might not be "take a deep dive," but...
Good point. Make sure I'm on the same page. Again, as you can see, we've somewhat front-loaded the, the wastewater due to the ARPA funding. And then this is just for fiscal year twenty-three. Um, the one change on this page is the wet well upgrade for Veterans Park. And the chlorine generator, the foundation down at the treatment plant, and then, uh, SCADA improvements. So that would be the, the four additional projects that we've added to fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, next is electrical. Can't remember what meeting it was, but I expressed that Mr. Stupitz, myself and staff were gonna take an extensive look at all of the, the estimates, the engineer's estimates for all of the electrical projects. We have done that. Um, we found that a lot of the old estimates were fairly accurate. They didn't keep up with inflation, but they only included the construction. There wasn't design included with it. There wasn't construction management, surveying, geotech, um, any inflation. There was none of that included with it. So we created a rather extensive spreadsheet, built all of that in there due, um, and got all, most of those numbers from recent projects, so we have pretty updated numbers. One of them was the San Felipe de Mendota project that, uh, you guys recently awarded. So using those accurate numbers, we were able to update all of our projects. So there, you'll see multiple changes on the next couple of slides. In addition to pricing changes, which is, uh, pretty consistent through most of these, we also moved, um, substation six up into the five-year plan. It was further out. Uh, we're being told that it needs to be done within the next five years. Um, and then also circuits fifty-four, or forty-five, sixty-one, sixty-two, that's actually one we have under design by a consultant that was suggested to us from the UAC. Um, feeder sixty-three to sub-three is being designed in-house. And then feeder fourteen to twenty-four is gonna take a little bit of design, but it's mostly, um, material and construction dollars that PAR should be able to do a part of the four KV project. Um, and then also feeder sixty-three to sixty-four, that's another project that's under design by our consultant. Um, and then I do want to mention the feeder fifty-three replacement. The, the name was changed in Munis, and you'll see on the city manager's report that is the San Felipe project. At the end of it, you see it says SF dash M. That it, we just, I just wanted to mention that, so it didn't look like a new project. And then feeder fifty-four cable replacement is another one that has been moved up. This is the five-year breakout. It appears that it's very front-loaded, but that is the, the purchase of the transformers. We've been in discussions with, um, a couple of companies on doing the design for us, so we can, um, purchase six of them that are gonna be identical. It makes it easier to work on, um, and understand. So that's why that looks so front-loaded on there. For fiscal year twenty-three, um, again, the circuit forty-five, sixty-one, sixty-two, it's under design. We've just reviewed sixty percent design, uh, and should have that one ready for construction in the next couple of months. Feeder sixty-three to sub-three, internal design. And then also sub-three, four and five, as I just mentioned, those are... For all three of those projects, that is the purchase of the transformer for roughly two million dollars, and then also design for sub-three and sub-four for the hundred and fifty thousand. So those are the changes for, for electric since the last time you've seen them. Do I have any questions on electric?
I have a couple of questions, primarily around the fact that when we last looked at this, I think it was in December, between December and now, um, especially with the next fiscal year, we're seeing substantial increases in the budget. Uh, something that I've asked for, for years now, is in the capital improvement fund, uh, that we have an understanding of how much money we start with, how much money comes in each year, and how much money goes out each year. I've yet to see that.
Okay.
That makes it very difficult to look at these projects and say, "Yes, we can afford this. Uh, no, we need to slow things down a little bit here." Um, I do understand that the rescue plan money is, some of it is identified for use in water and wastewater. Uh, but when we look at these things, um, it always seems to be, "Well, we don't really care how much money we have. We're just gonna do projects." And sometimes that gets you in trouble, especially over the past couple of years with some of the large projects that were done, uh, that came in two, three times what the estimates were. Uh, those are lots of millions of dollars, and without knowing where we're at, uh, it's very difficult to say, "Yeah, go ahead. Go, you know, do all this stuff. That's great. We'll get these projects done." Uh, we have to know how much money we have. And when we see between the prior estimate to the current estimate, especially for next year, um, we're talking substantial increases of what? Four million dollars? Five million dollars?
And maybe a little bit more.
And without knowing where that money is, uh, you know, it's just, it, it's very difficult for me to say, "Yeah, yeah, we're gonna approve all this stuff."
Understood. Um, Joe Stupitz and I have been working with the finance team, uh, in the rate model. I planned on hitting on this. We proposed two different options to them. One was to do the projects as we can reasonably expect to complete them and as they need to be done, um, for our aging infrastructure. Another plan was to, um, as the money becomes available, meaning that it was, um, really spaced out, uh, doing it that way. I believe there was twenty-four million dollars that was outside of the five-year plan. And working with Mr. Stupitz and the electrical supervisor, there was a number of those projects that can't wait the five years. Um, and then with the comments you had made, Mayor, um, I can work with the finance department and, um, we can produce that. Granted, they're the ones that produce it, so I don't wanna speak for them, but I can work with them to get you the information that you wanna see that can show, yes, we do have the money, or no, we don't have the money, and we can't approve all these.
And, and again, my concern is that, that this isn't something that I woke up this morning and thought about. It's something I've been asking for, for years.
Understood.
And it, it's never part of the process.
I would just like to add the comment that, as Mr. Littrell said, many of these projects are funded with the ARPA funds, which have restricted uses. It's the portion of the ARPA funds that has to be used for one of four purposes, which will, I can restate when we get to item number six. But this is one of those purposes, and it theoretically, it would not be possible to do all those projects if we didn't have the ARPA funding.
Well, I understand that, but...
To do them in the timetable being proposed by, by the CIP director.
I understand that, but it doesn't change the fact that we never seem to be able to get a picture of what happens with the capital improvement fund, as far as how much money comes into it, how much money goes out of it, how much money is going to be available over this five-year period. And whether it's ARPA funds coming in as new revenue, uh, it doesn't matter because we don't, I, I can't see where we have an idea of how much money comes in each year in a typical year and how much money goes out. That's what I'm asking for. Once again, that's what I'm asking for.
I can work on that, Mayor. One, the only other thing I wanted to mention is with these larger projects, the larger costs of these projects, um, in working with Mr. Stupitz and the finance department, we were gonna recommend, instead of waiting the full five years to do a, um, a whole rate study, is to move that up a couple of years, uh, to approximately fiscal year twenty-four and, um, be able to present those findings in twenty-five. So if there's no more questions on electric, I can move on.
Before we get too much further along, you'd be moving to streets next?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, before we leave utilities then, um, you know, it, it came up earlier in this discussion about the schedule of fees. Uh, the process that occurred with this, uh, water service line fee, um, I would like to make a motion that with the retention of Sklar Williams to look at contracts for the city as an outside council, that staff be directed to move the SNWA contract analysis to the front of that list. Maybe not the very front. I'm, I'm not trying to set the definite priority, so that we have an understanding of what that SNWA contract calls for, and we do not run into a situation like we just had where a recommendation for a fee increase was being requested, uh, that simply didn't exist, that SNWA was never going to charge us that money. I feel it's essential that, uh, we have an understanding of what our agreement with SNWA is so that we don't charge our ratepayers for something that's never going to occur. So my motion would be to have Sklar Williams review the SNWA contracts and provide a, a detailed summary of what those contracts call for. Anyone wishing to second that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Bridges?
Is, is it important that we have, in this case, Sklar Williams do it as opposed to internal counsel? Is that something that can be done, uh, without having to, um... To pay outside counsel in terms of this is not a contract. This is a, a previous agreement between SNWA and Boulder City.
The contract that was approved by this council a month or so ago with Sklar Williams was specifically to review these types of contracts. Um, Madam City Attorney, is this, is that SNWA or series of SNWA contracts within the scope that Sklar Williams would be looking at?
Y- yes, I think that would fall under our utili- utilities legal advice.
Okay.
And they are considered to be the experts, which is why we retain them?
Yes, uh, Anne Pongratz worked for the Colorado River Commission. This was chair of the Public Utilities Commission, so she's very, uh, familiar with these types of contracts.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Does that answer your question? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, just a little more discussion as far as why we feel like it needs to be moved up before the others.
Because what almost happened, uh, was to go out and charge our residents tens of thousands, possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars unnecessarily.
But, um, it didn't happen, so I'm just wondering what, for future, necessitates us moving it ahead of maybe something else?
Well, I didn't say before everything else. I said to move it to the front as a priority, not displacing others. I will leave that up to Madam City Attorney to make that determination. But this is exactly the type of work, uh, that Sklar Williams was retained to do, and clearly a, a very large misunderstanding occurred here. Um, Madam City Attorney, how, how many contracts do we have with SNWA?
Um, I would have to look. I, I don't have that.
Could it be more than one?
Yes, absolutely.
It is more than one, and several amendments over the years, they date back to the nineties. So there are several, and they each, um, have different pieces to them, so...
And further, we are in talks with SNWA, uh, to potentially join in in inter-local agreement for upgrading our current wastewater facility. Um, we need to know what's in there before we take on a multimillion-dollar project.
Right, I wouldn't have a problem with that being put to the front so that we understand what's in it before we make decisions and enter to, into an agreement of that sort with that project specifically being moved.
Well, that's not my motion. My motion is to have a look at all of the SNWA contracts, not with regard to a specific project.
I, I have another question.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, um, I wanna make sure I understand this correctly. Any changes in fees would have had to go through a legal process, correct? So we would not have been able to approve a increase in a utility rate without the process of, uh, that was described, that I understood. It would have to be brought back because the rate increase was by resolution. So to have, to go through a rate change, we would have to have legal advice on the contract to begin with. Yes, no?
In, in, in any fee increase, you would have to have, uh, a process, but there are certain fees that are not assessed by the city of Boulder City. Um, and if that fee was not assessed by the city of Boulder City, the city would not have control over that fee.
Okay. But if it wa- it wasn't, okay.
Yeah, so if, if SNWA assesses certain fees that were required to pass on to users, that may not necessarily go before, but, and I think that's what, that, that we're getting at. But it would, certainly wouldn't be, uh, burden for Sklar Williams to look at this. I don't think it would be, um, a significant increase in their responsibilities for what they're performing for the city right now.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Me.
Aye.
Let's try this again, shall we? When the, the vote is called for all those in favor, um, it's best to respond aye. Uh, when the vote is then requested for those that are opposed, it's best to say nay. So we'll try it again. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three-two with Councilmembers Fox and Jorgensen dissenting. Mr. Littrell?
Uh, for streets changes, uh, the only thing of si- significance would be reporting, uh, RTC funding. So we have, sorry, the Railroad Museum, the construction dollars for that has been put into RTC, uh, their capital improvement plan. I also wanted to mention that right now for the neighborhood rehabilitation, our crack and celery program, it's funded at one point, too, but we're proposing to be closer to two million, almost doubling the size of our typical projects. Once we coordinate that with RTC, it'll come back to you with, uh, um, other projects that will come back after we have funding agreements with RTC would be Nevada Way, uh, from Wyoming up around Park Street with a couple other side streets, Golf Course Estates, and then also Georgia. Um, all three of those are, the first one's under design, the second two are almost under design. So out of the, all the streets projects, fifty thousand is funded through our general fund. The rest of it, RTC.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I know I, I beat this horse to death. Sorry about the, saying that, but the ADA upgrades program, will that include fixing the truncated dots?
We're working on that. Um, the, my last discussion with RTC is gonna substantially help us out if it's gonna be implemented. Um, they're proposing to make, uh, one large bucket of money, basically, that we will be able to withdraw funds for, for pedestrian upgrades, for street lighting upgrades, um, all of the, the smaller funded projects that we typically do in-house or with, um, smaller construction companies. So yes, that is, uh, a major focus. And then also, with any of our street projects, we are updating the ADA ramps, the truncated domes, everything of that nature.
Yeah, I, I'm, sooner the better. I, nope, there are people who would like to be able to cross the street with their, with the stick or with the seeing-eye dog and not have it go diagonal across traffic in order to make it to the other side.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Um, on that note, what steps, uh, are we now taking as a city to make sure that when we are making these ADA improvements, uh, that we're actually meeting the needs, uh, of those who use them as opposed to just, you know, as long as it's... opposed to just, you know, as long as it's, you know, as written by code, you know, there's can always be a difference with that. What steps are we taking to mitigate that?
Between staff and between the consultants that we've hired, we've expressed that to them, that yes, code may say this, but if we can go the extra mile and make it easier to use, we're all for that, especially since RTC has agreed to fund these projects. Standards have changed quite a bit since most of our ADA ramps have been put in, they've made them quite a bit better, where instead of being all at a diagonal, pointing somebody out in the center of the street, walking diagonal across the street, they have now since made them so you walk perpendicular to the street, so there'd be two ramps at each corner.
And whenever possible, you know, I think, you know, we should also be talking with those who would be using, you know, said thing, because it can, everybody can have their degree in something, and then when the one person who actually needs to use it shows up and they say, yeah, but that's not how, that's not how we use it. So I just think anytime that that is a potential, we need to explore that. With regards to pedestrian bridges, I did see that in there, is that something that we have planned right now, or?
That's RTC's verbiage. Yeah, they, they have their language, their standard set of language, we have no bridges proposed.
And then finally, the streetscape rehabilitation, you know, it mentions, I think Adams, Georgia, you know, obviously we have landscape needs, we also have them in the interior as well. You know, one thing that I, you know, feel like I constantly am bringing up is what are we doing about our landscaping needs out here, especially as we continue to enter, you know, this water crisis will continue to go on and it'll be worse and worse as the years go by. You know, and here we are, another year passed, where now we're trying to budget to see where we're at, and we don't really have a, an updated list on what type of landscaping we should be looking at. And, you know, and so, you know, summers, we're basically almost already there, you know, we're basically getting to somewhere when it's 90 degrees outside, you know, we're not going to be planting anything anytime soon, and so now we're going to wait for a whole nother thing, and then I just would really hate to see, it feels like we just kind of keep kicking that cow down the road when it's something we need to be addressing head-on right now. So as soon as that can come to us, what are, is our plan for landscaping, that way, you know, the next time we're talking about budget, we can actually have a realistic view on how to tackle this as a whole.
Originally, we started with trying to do a turf removal program internal. We quickly found out that that's an extremely large project. We did make a little headway internally, but in the last couple weeks, maybe a month, we have hired a consultant to put together more of a conceptual overall plan for all of our parks. And then from that conceptual plan, we're going to be doing individual parks or areas as separate projects. The landscaping staff will continue to do what they do and trying to make improvements as we go through, but then the overall program will become projects.
Because, you know, it's not just about removing the grass, because once you remove the grass, you actually want to be sure that you've got, you know, shade coverage in there, you know, up to a certain amount, you know, there's a lot that will go into this overall. So I think it's smart that we got a consultant, because as you said, it is going to be a heavy lift, but, you know, I just, it feels like, again, I keep bringing this, this subject up for us to discuss. I'm glad to hear that, it sounds like we're finally moving in that direction, I know state law told us we had to. So, you know, I'm not going to give out too many kudos there, but, you know, the sooner we can at least have that coming to us so that we can be reviewing and making those decisions, I think the better, so that we can be properly budgeting for it.
Staff has been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, but there's nothing yet to be able to present to council. As soon as we have this conceptual plan, I can bring that forward for you guys to look at, and then we can proceed on doing the projects from there.
Thank you.
I would just add to that, that the elevation of Lake Mead, it's probably not going to wait for us, so sooner the better.
Agreed.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So before I move on to the next slide, I know, Mayor, you had some concerns with us showing the revenues, the expenditures of the overall CIP. But if we were to be able to work that out with finance and be able to present something to you, what is everybody's feelings on the additions of the projects that I presented today? Is there, everybody comfortable with moving forward with those projects, knowing that I can, I can bring something forward at a future date, showing you that we actually do have the funds, or what's, can we have a little discussion on that?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I feel very comfortable with that, if you bring us the, that yes, we do have the money that whether it's coming in as revenue from ARPA, or whether it's, you know, CIP funds already in existence, accumulation of them, and then continued accumu, you know, projected.
Yeah, like I said before, I don't want to speak for finance, but I just saw Ms. Angela shaking her head yes, that.
We've already run the model with the numbers in it, so that would be very easy to provide.
Love to see the models, yes, so yes, I support that.
Just so my staff can start implementing these projects, she hasn't put all, Ms. Lewis hasn't put all these projects into our ClearGov program, because we wanted a consensus from you. Are you guys comfortable enough making another tentative approval of the changes that we made, knowing that a financier myself will bring that financial documentation forward?
I have a concern that these things are not getting proper review by the Utility Advisory Committee.
Okay.
The committee didn't meet last month, the meeting that they had yesterday, again, you know, there's no opportunity in less than 24 hours for any of their discussions to have an impact on what we're talking about today. I find it disturbing that we have this pattern of an advisory committee that is not giving us advice when it's necessary. So I, you know, do I see something wrong here? Well, I don't know if I see something wrong here. I know that there are indications, I did catch part of the Utility Advisory Committee meeting yesterday, I heard reservations being expressed by members. So if you're saying, yeah, go ahead, I can't do that.
Understood. I do know that with the ARPA funding, we did increase the wastewater 500,000, the water 2.5, the electric is a whole other animal, that one's changed substantially since the last time the UAC had given their recommendation to council. Water and wastewater, there was quite a bit more minor due to the ARPA funding.
Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
I guess I would feel that due to the substantial changes since the Utility Advisory Committee last reviewed it, I think it would be helpful to have them review those changes again, that's what they're, that's the intended purpose of that, of that board, so.
Would it make everybody more comfortable if we split it up with general fund or non-utility and utility, two different motions that way?
I believe that's helpful because they are two different funds.
Yep. Just looking for direction.
Anyone else? Chance?
Yeah, I would like to go ahead and make a motion. See, I feel comfortable, and I, I'm concerned that the utility, that the advisory committee has not been part of this, that they meet the night, last night, even though we've been involved in the budget process for quite a while. So I have no, no problems making a motion to go forward with these projects. And also contingent upon receiving a breakdown of the budget going forward.
I know in talking to Mr. Stubez, he was going to take what was being proposed today and provide that to the UAC. As I had said earlier, the, their recommendation that came in, I believe December, included everything other than the couple of projects that I mentioned today, besides electric, that there's been substantial changes to all of the projects, just because a lot of the numbers were outdated.
I'll second it.
With regard to discussion, I just want to clarify then that your motion is to say okay to these projects at this time without having information regarding the balances in the funds and the recommendations of the Utility Advisory Committee?
Well, we would have one more time to go through this, correct? We have one more meeting, or no?
I would view this as another tentative approval.
Okay, I would say this is a tentative approval with, with the receipt of these budget items, with the receipt of the funding process up until now, including the revenues from ARPA, and then going forward.
We can do that.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
I'm also nay, so it would be Councilmember Adams and I are in opposition.
I have one more slide. These are the projects that were proposed by councilmembers. I can, we can go through them one by one, or I'll go through them one by one, and then there was no motion made on these, they were just suggestions by individual members. So I appreciate some direction on these ones. The first one that has been mentioned multiple times is a place for mounted patrol. We would need to do some additional research, figure out if there's any additional O&amp;M costs to maintain it, or, I've heard rumors that they would maintain it, but we need to do some more research. I should have prefaced all of this, that there, most of these projects, we haven't done enough research on them to be able to propose them for '23. So I'm just looking for direction to get them added to the CIP. If we can do them in '23, that's great, and I will specifically mention a couple of them when I get down to it, that I believe that we can get done, but the rest of them, I believe that it's going to take some, some more research. So there's the mounted patrol, looking for.
Mr. Littrell? You know, that's an item that I had recommended. My understanding of that is that there is a nonprofit that supports the activity of the mounted patrol, and the basis for it would be that there would be an agreement between the city and that nonprofit, similar to the agreements we have with many nonprofits here in Boulder City. And that they would be responsible for construction of the buildings and maintenance of those, that property.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Do we know where that property would be located, and where are they currently keeping the mounted?
To answer the first part, I know we were looking at an area just north of where the corrals are now, as for the second part, I'm not sure.
Currently, my understanding is the officers, the police officers that are involved have their own horses in their own corral areas, and other volunteers also have horses and corrals. The problem is they have equipment and supplies that they would like to be able to keep in one place so that they can do the training they feel is necessary and work with the horses as needed. There's also a safety concern with these horses being in with the general population of the corral area, so an area just adjacent to the existing Horsemen's Association area has been looked at.
The second item was the RV parking. We would like to look into that more for construction, construction dollars, O&amp;M costs, whether there's insurance requirements, management, maintenance, some of the rough numbers that I've been able to calculate with my staff. If we were to use millings for the surface, which is an approved surface application, that was the first question I had, because I know years ago, we had gotten in trouble for vehicles being parked on dirt, oil dripping out of the vehicles, and contaminated the soil. But it is okay to use this for a parking area, but the drawback to that is if we ever try to repurpose and sell that property, that soil is considered contaminated. If they were to find even just a cupful of those millings on that surface, there would be a lot of work that we have to do, so there's going to be a lot of work to remove all of it, but it is considered a contaminated surface at that point.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, I'm very uncomfortable with this item, actually, I, for a couple of reasons. First off, I don't think it's our place to open an RV and boat storage, competing directly with businesses, I don't think that's the government's place. Secondly, I think that's a large liability for us, I mean, all it's going to take is someone who's had a few too many parking their boat, running into three RVs while they go to park their boat, and someone's going to be held accountable for that, and I, and so I'm uncomfortable with it for that reason. Thirdly, I don't know what kind of security we're going to provide down there for the hundreds of thousands of dollars of things that will be parked down there, so that's another liability for us, I believe. I don't think we have any business doing something like this, so I'm super uncomfortable with it, and I don't agree with it.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
I agree, well, I agree primarily, I don't like the city getting into business that businesses are in, that we would directly be taking business away from current owners of parking facilities. And also, I guess I feel it's the response of if somebody wants to own an RV, to find a place for that RV to live. So I, and the other thing that really concerns me about this is, I know a number of RV owners who have from time to time had people living in their RVs, running the generator. In fact, I've heard, it's just hearsay, several people who have had family members with an ongoing living situation in their RV. I think that's, that's putting a lot of liability on the city in terms of vandalism, in terms of people getting hurt, I just don't think we belong in the RV parking business, especially when people would be living, could possibly be living there, and they'd be storing these vehicles long-term. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess, you know, on the opposite concern for me, because it's not that I don't necessarily disagree with the sentiments as much as, you know, Nevada state law does, you know, dictate, you know, on-street parking and what is considered storage and all that sort of stuff. And if we do get to a point where we are needing to enforce it, because, you know, we don't get a choice on whether or not we enforce Nevada state law, that is expected of us, and suddenly, people are left with nowhere to go, because we don't even have the facilities to allow for it, and yet there's, we're expecting enforcement to start occurring, then, then I think there is, at that point, a responsibility of the city government to fill in that need.
Councilmember Fox?
Yeah, I don't think it's a good idea either, like competing against other businesses, I don't think we should be doing that. Just, I'm pretty much saying the same thing that Councilmember Jorgensen and Bridges are, that there's too much liability. I know it's $250,000 for it, but it'd cost a lot more than that between security, construction, and the ongoing maintenance of it, and management. And then, again, competing against other businesses here in town, when I know there's, you know, you put up some land for lease, and there'll be a line of people willing to take it over to open a RV storage unit here in town.
Thank you. You know, this is another item that I had brought forward, I'm not surprised by the whole discussion about how we're competing against businesses. Certainly, that's, you know, a take that people have on things. You know, we could go down to Bravo Field and say, you know what, that parking lot's out of there. We can go down to Veterans Park and say, we're ripping out all the parking spaces down there, because as a community, we don't provide that type of service. People are going to have to figure out what to do with their vehicles, because this city's not going to compete against what could be paid parking. I think we missed the point of all of that. I think the fact that we know the storage companies here in town that do long-term storage are full, you are hard-pressed to find a place where you can put that. What we have is a public safety issue here, it's not a business competition, it's none of those types of things. There are other communities across the country that provide this type of thing. We have very narrow streets, especially in the older part of our town, the absurdity of going to all the residents who have lived here for a long time and say, sorry, your boat, your trailer, your motorhome, your RV, that's all out of here, we're not going to tolerate it, don't care how you enjoy your life, that's going to be your problem. Or even better yet, putting it up for lease for.
Or even better yet, putting it up for lease for somebody to come in, and they can charge our residents even more. That would be something that we can certainly impose on our residents to say, you know what, we're going to enforce this law, we're going to make you to do that, and we're going to stuff some money in some happy person's pocket who manages to get the lease. Once again, this is a public safety issue. It's not unheard of in this country that municipalities provide parking for people to park their vehicles. So I get the whole argument about, oh, we're un-American, or we're anti-capitalist, or something like that. We're going to see kids get killed. We certainly have heard of pets getting run over from darting out behind these large vehicles when drivers can't see them. So the idea of this is to provide a service for our residents so we can make our community safer. That's what the goal of this recommendation is, and it's certainly done across the country and other communities.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you. I was just wondering, how many of these parking lots Las Vegas and Henderson have?
I haven't looked into that. I can look into that though.
Okay, great. And also, isn't it possible for us to put up land for sales with the express purpose that they would build storage facilities so that we could alleviate some of that problem? As opposed to opening our own parking lot? And I think it's apples and oranges with a parking lot at, say, Vets Field versus charging someone or having someone's property be long-term parked on there. I think that's different, that's visiting a place where you come in and you leave and you go, and so I just think that's apples and oranges. So again, I don't think it's unconstitutional and American. I just think that it's just not something for us to get into. We could offer other solutions such as asking the voters if they want to release, say, a certain amount of land with the express intent that we would build more storage facilities so that we could help alleviate this problem. Or they go into town.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, two things. First of all, I hope that the owners of storage facilities in Boulder City currently don't feel that they're gouging their customers. Secondly, who's to say that once we do this, that they don't lose their customers to an opportunity to either not pay or to pay less at a municipal parking lot? I don't think there's any comparison to a car lot because typically, people come, they do what they need to do, and they leave. And it's, usually, they're going to get towed if they leave their car in a parking lot as a storage, for storage. This is a storage facility, and I think if we want to offer more land for that, then we offer the land and allow a commercial venture to come in and purchase or lease the land and do what it is that they do. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else? And by doing that, I have absolutely a certainty that we will be forcing our residents to pay much more to have these vehicles that so many of our residents enjoy. So once again, I do understand it's not possible for a community to help itself. We have to help someone else help others and let them make a lot of money off of our residents rather than saying, we have a public safety problem here and we're going to address it. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Again, I believe that it could be addressed differently. Is there a way to remove this item from the proposed?
It's not on any list right now. Mr. Littrell is going through a list of suggestions that we have. Would you like us to vote on them individually now at this time?
We can vote on them individually now?
Okay, why don't we go back to the start of the list so we can do that?
So the first one was the mounted patrol for $50,000.
I make a motion that we include up to $50,000 in the acquisitions fund for a nonprofit to enter into an agreement with the city for the mounted police patrol. Anyone wishing to second?
I'll second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay. Before, there's a motion on the RV parking. We did put together an estimate for that, and for a millings version, we have two different, one would be with asphalt, one would be with millings. For millings, the estimate was $320,000, which includes grading. Millings, we're proposing on getting for free with our industrial project, compacting and oiling the millings. Striping, we'd like to have, but I just don't know how well it'll hold up. That's a minor item on there. An eight-foot chain link fence around the perimeter, proposing to have eight light poles. That's just a guess on how many light poles. And the location, we don't know how close or how far away power would be, so that would be another guess. And then putting access control on there. Everybody would have an ID badge like we have to get into there. So that would be $320,000 for approximately an acre and a half that could store 100 to 120 vehicles. For the asphalt, and pretty much everything else would be the same, other than the millings, that was closer to $700,000.
Thank you. I will make a motion to propose $320 for RV parking facility for the safety of our residents. Anyone wishing to second?
Mayor, I think you said $320,000, I think you meant $320,000.
I did mean that. Thank you. Anyone wishing to second? Mr. Littrell, let's move on.
Okay. Number three was internet connections at city-owned buildings for $100,000 to provide internet access at an adequate level. That's another one of your items, Mayor. I did have a question, if you could elaborate on an adequate level. Is there a speed that you're looking for or reliability or?
Within, and, you know, I know, noticed you have on there whether it's ARPA-funded. Within the ARPA funding, one of those guidelines is to increase broadband.
Yes, sir.
So yes, the idea would be to identify what a standard speed is and make sure that that's available at all of our public buildings. I believe that, right now, they're talking somewhere in the neighborhood, was it 10 gig? Speed was supposed to be normal.
That would be impressive, but we don't have that here in Boulder City yet.
That's what I figured, but, you know, whatever is considered to be the standard at this point, you know, whether it's 10 meg, 1 gig, 5 gig. And yes, to use ARPA funding, which is one of the guidelines for ARPA funding, is to increase broadband connectivity.
Okay. This is one of the projects that I believe that we could get started on in 23. Like, if we were to move forward with the RV parking, I thought we would need a little bit more time to work out all the details.
We won't need to worry about that.
I understand. So this was one of the ones that I felt that we could move forward. I don't know if it would be completed. It's not my department with, working with IT, but this is one of the ones that I feel that we could move forward with.
Thank you. Mr. Tetter?
It is an approved use with ARPA, so what I would envision, if we find there's facilities that are lacking in speed or access, something like that, from talking extensively with the contact I have in the governor's office, connections between our own facilities as a complete approved use with the broadband funds.
Again, I know I've heard in the past that, I don't know if it's still that way, but our fire department may not have had some adequate speeds out there. I don't know what, you know, the Smith Building might have if we were to try and get that up to speed on wireless. Again, the money's out there to bring city-owned properties up to current standard.
And to clarify, I knew ARPA was available, I just wanted.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification.
To get the approval for ARPA funding.
Yep.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
When we say ARPA, do we mean in-house ARPA monies that we had? Or I know this date was allotted monies for connectivity, right, of sorts? But does that also branch over to how many, I don't know, how many whatevers we have?
This would just be for connections between our own facilities. The other pots of money is more for increasing community speeds and providing to underserved areas, which, when they do come out with the new broadband maps of current speeds, the current maps go off of one house per block or street, so then it shows that whole area is covered, but the FCC is coming out with new maps. That's my understanding, in the next, hopefully, six months.
Do you see us getting any of that money, which would maybe help even with this, in the long run? I mean, increasing our?
Right now, we do not meet the criteria. We, our speeds are currently too fast in the community for those funds.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll make the motion then to provide up to $100,000 of ARPA funding for standardization of broadband speeds to city-owned properties.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, item four, I guess they're bolded, security at community gardens. I got an estimate for more of a, not just chain link fence, but more of a decorative. You'd see the, not the fancy, fancy wrought iron fence, but more of the thicker post-type fence to enclose the community gardens up by the water filtration plant. It's roughly $42,000 for an eight-foot fence. And then to provide access control would be roughly another $15,000. So $57,000 is what we were proposing for that. That is another project that I feel that we could move forward with next year.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and comments. First of all, is this something that people could look through? Is this a, okay. So this is something that somebody could walk by and appreciate that there's a a community gardens in there, but that in order to have access to those gardens, they would need a key card.
Correct.
Just to go back a little bit, from members of the community that I've talked to for a number of years, there's been a problem with vandalism. I know it's one person or several who have felt unfairly treated, who have gone in and removed irrigation systems, removed plants. And each one of those plots is rented or leased by the Parks and Rec Department to that individual. That, I believe, the city provides the water, but they provide their seeds. They, some of them enclose them with fabric, some, you know, they build structures out of PVC pipe. But what happens is that people have access to it that could come in, that can pick the produce. But in this case, there have been complaints, and this is not the first year in over period that there has been actual vandalism. In fact, an individual put up cameras because they were concerned about the fact that their gardens had been vandalized, and the vandal vandalized the cameras. So one option, and I had talked to them about it, was unfortunately gating around the community gardens so that people could know, the only people that could go in there to attend the gardens would be those with an access card. Like I said, it's unfortunate, and if it, if none of this had happened before, that would be a different story. But this is an ongoing problem. I've talked to gardeners there, I've talked to a number of gardeners there who have repeated the story to me of vandalism of their plots. And they don't pay much, and certainly that could be a different discussion another time, but I think it's necessary to move forward. Apparently, there have been people who have left because they're so disappointed about the fact that there's been no action taken on this problem. So that seems to be the next step. Like I said, we, I understand there have been cameras placed there, and those have been destroyed too. And that's where, that's where I am with this.
One other item I want to mention on this one would be a minor amount of an additional O and M between police and Parks and Rec with the access control. We know the access control doesn't last forever, so there would be some additional work by police and our contractor, and then the monitoring of the key cards. I'm guessing that Parks and Rec would do that since they monitor who has what plot.
Other discussion? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I'm very, very reserved about gating off, what is a public park, you know? I know the community gardens themselves are rented out, but, you know, they are a part of that park. It's also, you know, a historic property, you know, and I also worry about this idea that now we're going to be fencing it in as part of it. I was just curious, you know, how many, like, how many official, like, files of violation have been filed? Like, have people actually, you know, wanting to, going to the police department, basically, and saying, this was vandalized? We've received complaints, but anyone that has complained, we've instructed if something happened for them to file a police report, and that has not been done. So if there's been no police reports being filed, I mean, I start to get even more concerned about taking this sort of action when, you know, and I get it, filing a police report is a whole nother process, and a lot of people just want to, you know, want to have it be said and done. But at a certain point, if this truly is an ongoing issue, not one, you know, we all speak to different people. I know gardeners, and I've never heard anything from them personally. I know there are some isolated incidents that probably many are aware of, but, you know, without people, you know, without police reports being filed, without us actually having any actual knowledge or a way to look at what is the problem, you know, we're just putting up a gate hoping that addresses it when we don't even know what it is. You know, what if it is a gardener who is renting a plot, who has access to the key, who is going in and causing this vandalism? You know, it might not solve the solution if we don't actually know what the problem is. If there's no police reports being filed, then nothing for us to actually take action on, and now we've just put up an iron gate around, you know, a beautiful little historic park. I don't think we should be moving forward at this time based on the information that we currently have.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
I think I also have a little bit of a concern that, I have also heard that there's problems at the garden. I think, I mean, I'd have to have my head in the sand to not have heard that. It's a small community, and people, you know, address it the minute they see you and address it. But I know the mayor had brought up doing a second phase over at ABC Park. Would it be possible to move those gardens, all of that, over into that area? Is that an area where it would be more secure, away? The only reason I ask this is because here we have this water filtration building that we're trying to give monies to, to be able to provide the opportunity for people to come see it. And we don't really have parking there. We don't have anything there for them to be at, and that would eliminate maybe one of those problems that are on the horizon, and maybe we could eliminate two problems by doing that. So that's just some questions or thoughts that I've had about that area is maybe we do relocate the gardens up by ABC Park, see if that helps, do it. And then it provides us the opportunity there to have parking for the time when we do have one of our assets, our historical assets, up and running. We already have funding for that, and we're getting grants for that to get it up and running for the community to see and/or visitors.
Councilmember Bridges?
I understand the concern. If I were, if there was an opportunity to fund a better security system than a fence, I'd be more than happy to have it. I've been hearing this for years, years and years. There is a person specifically who they know, who has bragged about it. And, and yet, because that person hasn't been caught, or people haven't been caught, or cameras are disabled, or people are discouraged from filing a police report, if money could be put, budgeted, to set up a non-invasive security system with cameras so that it could be obvious if someone were caught. Because that person or people come in the middle of the night, they do the vandalism when other people aren't there. So if there's no appetite for a gated fence, I'd like to know what kind of funds it would take to put in an actual camera system, not just, because the only one I've heard of was, I think several, the city put in several, but that an individual put them up because their garden had. but that an individual put them up because their garden had been vandalized several times. And that was a school project. Somebody ripped out a school project, and so to me, that's unacceptable. So any kind of funding for a actual camera system up high enough so, so at the meantime, people aren't losing what they, they've spent time putting in the ground and watching grow only to come and find everything torn out of the ground. So that would be the other option.
Thank you. Others? Councilmember Fox?
Yeah, I have a problem with spending almost $60,000 on a, on a gate around a garden. But I would be open to looking at other options, whether it's cameras or relocating.
Thank you. You know, I'm surprised we didn't hear the recommendation that we lease some city land to somebody, and they can start renting the space for community gardens and build a business that way, because apparently that's the only way we can provide anything, any services to our community is we have somebody making money off of it. But with regard to moving it to ABC Park, that's not the intent of the recommendation that was accepted last year to do something at ABC Park, because the idea is of a community garden, to have those accessible to people in a neighborhood, not to try and move something somewhere else. It was to expand the problem. I too know people personally who have gardens up there, and what they tell me is this is much ado about nothing, that there are some personality issues that flare up from time to time among a very small group of people, and that leads to all kinds of accusations going back and forth. And those same people that I know that do have gardens there, they've said they do not want a fence around it, that they prefer it to be open. So without knowing what damage is being done, and how often that is occurring, because again, I've heard these, "Oh, this is happening, and this is happening, and this is happening." But then I hear from people who are actually up there saying, "No, there was one instance sometime ago that something happened, and it's not a regular occurrence at all, and they prefer not to have a fence around it." I know the discussions that we've had about ABC Park having a community, a second community garden there, the suggestion is to have a fence because there's a high bunny rabbit population down there that we don't appear to have at the existing community gardens, and they are probably going to eat everything. But at the existing one, again, I've been told by people who've been gardening there for years, they've not had a problem with rabbits, or I, I was told, I don't know if that was the meeting you were at, Keegan, that the two women, the two master gardeners from the extension service, they have a vegetarian coyote that gets into their community garden and eats things out of it. But I've not heard that concern at the existing community garden. I don't know that the expense is worth it, and people that are renting plots there have told me they do not wish to have a fence. Any other discussion? Councilmember Bridges?
Would this be a proper opportunity to look into the cost of putting up a formal security system? At least because these situations have not been filmed, they've not been seen. It's just, I've, I've probably talked to four individual plot owners who have had serious problems. And in order to catch the person, they have to see the person or the people who are coming in and doing that. So what I'd like to know is what it would cost to put in a formal security system, not just a camera in the corner, but then not a gate, not a fence. I, I don't want to upset the people who are there. I just want to keep their hard work safe.
Yeah, I don't know if this rises to the level to go to our security committee that we have with staff, but it's definitely something that I can work with. PD, Mr. Albowitz, Sergeant Albowitz, or Lieutenant, sorry. Lieutenant Albowitz is kind of the head of our security. I could, I could work with him and see.
I think it is a security issue.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
I know that Roger Hall is here, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask him, but have you had any complaints, or have you filled in anything that seems to necessitate some kind of need for security measures and/or surveillance at the gardens?
Roger Hall, Parks and Recreation Director. Over the last few years, we have been experiencing vandalism at the, at the gardens. People have ripped out irrigation like, like was said. We've had the city put up two game cameras up there because we wanted to catch the people, and they were stolen within two weeks. Individuals have put up game cameras, and they were stolen as well. So some sort of security needs to be, we'd like to catch the person that's doing this. It's not fair to the people. They put a lot of hard work into their plots, and then they come one day, and it's all destroyed. And so something's happening there. We don't know who, who's doing that. We'd like to catch the person doing that, and one way to do it would be to put a couple of good cameras up there where they can't get to them, and you could see who's doing this type of thing, and have it a night vision camera type of thing, because a lot of this stuff is happening at night. So that would be my recommendation.
Do we have any lighting around that area at night?
I believe there is lighting from the, the building that shines on there, but we'll have to look at that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hall, in the last six months, how many reports of damage have you had?
I would say three or four to our office, and they were, they've contacted...
Do you record that information, take a report, or?
I do have emails that we save in a file. I have been saving those, yes. The people, the one item that was talked about, the school, they worked a school project out, and they put a worm garden in on one of the plots down there. And after they did this, and it was about $300 or $400 in, in stuff that they put into the ground, and, and they were gonna have the, the kids come over so they could teach them how to cultivate worms and plant plants, and they came to the garden, and it was just completely destroyed. Everything was pulled out of there. Michelle Gimel actually donated money to put it back in, in enough time to, so we could get the kids in, into that plot, so we could have that educational lesson. So things are happening there. I'd love to find out who's doing it, and one of the ways would be a security camera that would be able to catch these people. And a lot of times, if they see cameras up and we, we, you know, do the educational process, a lot of times people don't want to get caught, and they, they might quit doing what they're doing, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Hall? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Anyone wishing to make a motion on this item? Councilmember Bridges?
Now, does the motion have to be specific to having a gate? Or can I make a motion having to do with a study and approximate cost of putting up a secure camera system?
It's up to you how you wish to.
Okay, I wish to make a motion that we research the cost of a formal camera system, not just, camera and lighting. So camera and lighting system for security purposes at the community gardens.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion's unanimous.
The, the fifth item is municipal dog park. Some of the numbers that we've put together, and some of the items that we've talked about that seemed well-received was, the first one would be to, to fence off the back end of the ball fields down at Veterans Memorial. An estimate for that, that I know was presented to council, but for public knowledge, 57,000 for all the fencing. One field would be the whole out, not the whole outfield, but the whole 100 feet of the outfield, so the kids still have the 200 feet to play ball. And then the other one would be split into two, right in center field, for small and medium dogs, or however we break it up. So 57,000 for all the chain link fencing, about another 15,000 for benches, trash cans, waste bags, et cetera. If we were to look at providing a whole new location, if this is a dirt area, these are numbers that we had proposed from before, if it was a dirt area that we wanted to sod and irrigate, it would be about 95,000 for a one-acre area. A lot of the parks that I've visited in Henderson are around an acre apiece, and they usually have three of them. So I'm giving you numbers for just one acre. About 95,000 to sod and irrigate. If it was something that already has grass, like we discussed around the skate park, it's already got grass, we might need some minor irrigation changes. And then plus the benches, trash cans, et cetera. If we wanted to go a little nicer for those areas with the wrought iron fence, similar to what we just discussed at the community gardens, it'd be about 50,000 to fence that one acre. And then we also proposed about 11,000 a year for additional O and M for a, a brand-new park. If it's previous grass, that, that cost would go down, because that O and M also included the, the cost of water. And then my landscape supervisor also had suggested a possibly a whole separate mower for that area as opposed to what they use for the rest of the parks. I don't have a cost on that, but just wanted to give you all the information that I had for what a new dog park or use in the back of the, the ball fields.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I was the one who had hoped to get the information. So it sounds like it would be $72,000 for the fencing and benches in order to supply an actual dog park at Veterans Park, utilizing some of two ball fields, but not keeping kids from being able to play ball in the ball fields.
Correct.
Correct? So that was my thought. I, I do not like the idea of a whole new ball field, because, you know, if we're talking about removing sod, where, you know, it, it certainly doesn't make a lot of sense to start fencing off and planting new sod. I thought the idea was great. It was, there was a time when, when the group was using that ball, one of those ball fields, and to have half of it available, or 100 feet of it, I think that's sufficient. I think it's a really good start as we try to encourage people to, to get their, their dogs out of the parks, off leash, and, and into an enclosed area that has turf. I think Sea Spot Run is a wonderful, wonderful dog park, but the only area to run your dog has hot gravel in the middle of summer, and it is not a place that you want your dogs running up and down. So I, I think that's a, a great option.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Is this one of those projects you thought was possible to be done in this budget year?
If we were to use the, the outfield of the ball fields, yeah, I believe that one could move forward. If it was a whole new location, I know we had the one proposed around the skate park. We haven't investigated that. I've heard that there's some, some slopes on the back end of that, but we might be able to configure something over there. But yeah, I don't see an issue if we wanted to use the back of the ball fields as a starting place. And if you guys want to make a motion to do that one now, and something for '24, no one that, you can change that come next fall, whatever you guys want to do.
Others? Councilmember Adams?
I guess my only question would be that, you know, when we did last talk about this at the city council, you know, we did ask for information to come back to us. So I guess my question is, do we want to have that information first before we say, "Let's set aside all this money and to do this," or do we want to say, "Okay, we'll set aside this money first, but based on what that says is going to depend on whether or not we move forward with the project"?
Anyone else? I, I would just like to say that, you know, I don't really understand the purpose of having baseball fields and then the skate park as dog parks that are within such close proximity to one another. I, I do understand the desire of some people that we would have dog parks virtually everywhere in Boulder City so that people don't have to walk too, too far or drive. You know, we don't have that kind of real estate. So I, I, I wouldn't look to have any more than one dog park at the Veterans Park area. There may be a location that's available somewhere else in town, but I don't see the purpose of doing two that are that close to one another, especially where either one of them would provide sufficient room to divide up into an area for large dogs and small dogs. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. But then that leaves the question of, what about other parts of town? So again, I, I can see using the ball fields, that's the, I, from the numbers you quoted, that was the least expensive alternative and probably the easiest to make happen.
Correct.
Councilmember Bridges?
I, in defense of two, if not three, the, the one being the full width and one split in half. There are big dogs, and there are small dogs, and there are dogs that get along together. There are also, is a need where you could throw a ball across for a dog to run, which seems to be the need of a lot of these folks with, with dogs that they let run at large, so to speak, that they're, they want to play. But then they also have areas where they just want their dogs to walk around and mingle and socialize. So because it's fencing off part of a ball field, of a fenced-in area we already have, and it's not going to affect the athletic program, the, the, the kids playing baseball. I, I think that having one larger field area and two smaller ones designated for like small dog or, or mixed use is, is a really good idea. May want to look forward, you know, to a different area at some point, but I think to have something right away that we can direct people to rather than just talking about it over a period of time.
Anyone else?
The only additional comment I wanted to possibly add to this, and I got to clarify with Mr. Hall, a lot of the ball fields have a warning track. You were talking about dogs running on hot gravel. Most of that 100-foot area would be grass, but there would be, what, 10, 15 feet of a warning track? 10 or 15 feet of warning track that we'd need to sod, and hopefully, we could just adjust the irrigation to a full 360 head. I don't have an estimate for what the additional sod would cost, but if we could go a little bit higher than the 72, that'd at least supplement the landscape crew putting in sod for the backside of that, if it's approved.
I, I think it's absolutely essential that we have an understanding that whatever does happen with these dog parks, no new grass is involved. I, I think that's absolutely critical to understand that we cannot plant more grass when we have so much of it already that goes unused. So if there's a problem with 10 or 15 feet of warning track, you know, either fence it off, or since these dogs are so well-behaved and trained, the owners can make sure that they don't step onto the warning track. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, would it be appropriate to make a motion? I would like...
Let's see if there's any other discussion before we proceed with that, or if you wish to go ahead. Again, you're always able to make a motion at any time.
Thank you. I would like to...
Any other discussion? Councilmember Bridges?
Thank you. I, I move to accept the, I move to budget $72,000 to fence ball fields, is it one and two? Ball, ball?
What ball field? There's two ball fields we're gonna use.
Yeah, there's, there were two ball fields with fencing, the 100-foot fence, and one of larger area and one divided in half?
One and three.
One and three, okay. I move to accept a budget of $72,000 in order to fence 100-foot section of ball fields one and three, with one of them being split in half, for the purpose of a dog park, including benches and, and bag holders in order to facilitate use.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, sorry, just one question.
Councilmember Adams?
I know you cited $72,000 is what you estimated the cost to be, and so we've put 72,000... I know you cited seventy-two thousand dollars is what you estimated the cost to be, and so we've put seventy-two thousand down. Is that enough? It doesn't sound like there's any wiggle room, but do you think you would be confident that at least seventy-two thousand dollars could get us where we need to?
Mr. Hall can do some bartering to get his bench cost down, but no, I, we'll get it done.
Okay, that's all, that's my only question.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion unanimous?
Okay, so last but not least, Councilmember Adams had asked about funding for Knights Guys. I do want to mention that Ms. Pipkin, who gave you a presentation last September, her and I, Mr. Stubez, and some others had worked on the grant. Grant's been submitted. I just found out earlier today that we're ranked number two in the state. And we hopefully will have a final determination by the fourteenth. And that's for, I believe it was for about two million dollars.
So when you say being ranked two, how many are are chosen at the end of the day? Just one?
She didn't say, but there is another local application that is ranked number one.
And then I guess my only question with this would be, I mean, obviously, so I think you said in May we would have a presentation?
The first, first meeting in May, Mr. Stubez and I will present some information. Ms. Pipkin will be here to hopefully give us a better update on the the grant. And then Mr. Stubez and I will give you an update on the lighting ordinance, the progress we're making on that.
Okay, and I guess that's kind of really my question because here we are at the budgeting process and, you know, if anybody ever said government moves slow, you know, they they sure meant it. But and it's it's nothing against against staff or the team. I just understand it's a it's a slow-moving ship that's part of the process. You know, do you think then at this point we we would be jumping ahead of ourselves, especially considering that we might have a grant coming, coming? We also might not, but, you know, in your professional opinion, do you think we might be getting ahead of ourselves to to try and look at adding additional monies or funding to our budget to tackle this issue at this time? Or do you think we should wait until? I I mean, I guess I'm already answering my own question because council still needs to make decisions on what direction we're actually heading, so.
Yeah. Yeah, pending the the lighting ordinance and receipt, receipt of the grant, I do think that we might be jumping ahead a little bit. If we do get the grant, that'll be quite a bit of funding and in-house labor will help stretch that. We, I don't know how quickly we can spend that grant money if we do get it. I feel it would be more appropriate that this fall we'll have a better idea and we could discuss what goes into FY twenty-four.
I appreciate it. I very much look forward to furthering the discussion, but I have no motion to make on this at this time.
Any other discussion? I I do feel this is, you know, a worthwhile thing. I think we need to approach this from the understanding that we live next to the city of lights. I can certainly step out of my back door and without a direct view of Las Vegas, it doesn't take much to look up and see the glow from Las Vegas. So can we help reduce this? Yes. I think it's a project, though, that needs to be taken in stride, where we look for opportunities to do this as we go forward and be very judicious with the amount of capital funds that we put into it. It it took us a while to get here. It would take a while for us to to fix it.
Agreed.
Any other discussion? Anyone wishing to make a motion?
The only other thing was my last slide to for the public so they can see our email address if anybody has any questions on proposed CIP projects or ongoing. They can always email that. There's three or four of us that monitor that email. We have received a couple emails over the last year that has been in place, but not very many.
Thank you.
With that, if there's any other projects you guys have in mind, happy to entertain those.
Anyone else? Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And we will take a fifteen-minute recess until four-ten. Sorry. I thought it would go a little faster. Madam City Clerk, are you ready?
We're ready.
All right. We'll call the meeting back to order. We are now on item number five for possible action, Resolution seventy-four thirty-three, a resolution of the city council waiving youth sports fees, swimming pool fees, and swimming lessons. This is an item that I had requested. I understand that finance has submitted their own opposing or other resolution in this matter, a very unusual step for staff to propose their own resolution. But I think the primary difference on these is the time periods that are being suggested. Also, there was a question regarding if we say swim lessons that it may have an impact on some grant programs that are in existence. So the amended version of the resolution that I have that all members have received a copy of, I believe, are also available to the public, is to remove the swim lessons from this, but to keep the time period that is suggested. I think that we need to keep in mind what this entire federal program is about, and that is that these funds, one of the uses is to address the impacts from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And to say that, well, we'll wait a while longer. We've had half of this rescue plan money now for many months. We know that children are going to be starting to look towards activities that will be available during the summer. I think waiting on this so that it it complies with something, some period of time that finance has determined is it makes life simpler on them. This pandemic has not been a matter of convenience for anybody I know. It's been a real mess for all of us. And in talking with the school principals, they have seen this with the children. The children have been impacted in significant ways. And one of the comments that had been made by a principal was that the children have simply not had an opportunity to get out and do physical activities like they normally would. They've also simply not been around each other. We've had people that have been confined to their homes, quarantined. School has not been held, regular activities have not been done as they normally would. This money was available the moment we received it. And so we've had it for several months. I think this is a very important thing for the children to be able to have this opportunity. I'm sure there are children who don't participate in these type of activities because of some of the costs. And this is something that is being done around the country. I know Mr. Tetter himself has said that the city he's from, Leavenworth, Kansas, had already implemented a program like this. The costs, just Mr. Tetter had given me a note here during the break that the cost would probably more be more in the neighborhood of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. When we had the CARES Act funding available in the community, again, the information that came to council about possible uses for that money did not include the fact that we may have been able to provide additional assistance to children that we wound up not being, not proposing until many months into the pandemic. And quite honestly, we we were very late to the game in that. I think we're a little bit late again with this money. But again, with these programs for summer activities starting very soon, this is the time and not to wait until some magical date of fiscal year because the money is not tied to our fiscal year. It's through a totally separate funding program from the federal government. So I would propose that the resolution we have that has at the top highlighted revised backup material provided by Mayor McManus rather than the proposal from finance to help them align with their bookkeeping. We get this money out into the community as quickly as we possibly can. And with the information that Mr. Tetter had provided me that the amount be increased to one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And with that, any discussion, questions, comments from council members? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Just wanted to ask, as far as ARPA funds go, if we funded this for, say, starting immediately and then go just to follow the fiscal year coming up to split the difference between what's happening here? And then at the end of the next budget cycle, assessing it again, we could then appropriate monies again, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be said that we do it right away until December twenty-four, right? And and then if it's seen that we need it, we could actually extend it the whole next budget cycle if we needed to extending it months past that, six months past.
Yes, so the money just has to be allocated to be spent by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four and spent by twenty-six. So you could start it immediately for a year or the twenty months as proposed, and you could extend that if if you wanted to and the funds were still available.
Okay, I I mean, I love the idea of helping the kids out. Obviously, I taught second grade and I have kids of my own and we've used rec programs for a long time. And we have a great rec program that I know I've always been proud of when I brought my kids to it. And I would like to provide an opportunity for youth to have have an out from COVID. I do think it's affected them mentally, physically, you know, emotionally, for sure. I guess my concern is that maybe we start it right away, but then align it with our next, since what we're talking about is budget year twenty-two, twenty-three, and put it in that budget for the next year and then assess it when it comes back up the next year.
And again, I I do understand that the Finance Department has put forth that this, that type of an alignment makes things, I don't know, square up for them. But with the ARPA funding, as Mr. Tetter had just explained, this amount of the funding is available through December twenty-twenty-four, which is the reason for having used that date. But to also be able to give assurance to parents and children, hey, this is the way this is going to be for some period of time. I don't think we're going to magically cure all of the issues that children have sustained over this past two-year period of time. And there certainly is no reason other than finance's desire to fit this into some schedule that they've determined because it's not the schedule of the ARPA funds. To give that assurance to these children and these parents, we're going to have this available for you for a couple of years. You're going to have an opportunity to participate in these programs without the fees being applied to you. Also for admittance to the swimming pool. Again, I I get that finance likes to put everything into whatever it is that they do, but that's not what the ARPA program is all about. And I think it's much more important to give parents and children the assurance that they're going to have this opportunity and it's not going to be a short-lived program. Any other discussion? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I do have a question from a budgetary perspective. Do the ARPA funds that would be used for this, do those show as revenue into the parks and rec budget? No?
No, that revenue would be shown as a general fund revenue.
So it's a general-
But with the with the knowledge that is used to support the fact that they're not going to get revenues
From, from that, okay.
Would normally charge people to use the facilities.
And as stated, we overlap three fiscal years, correct? We would-
Under this current proposal, yes.
Okay. And the second question is, don't we have to earmark the money by two thousand twenty-four, but we have until two thousand twenty-six to spend it? Okay, so it wouldn't, if we if we funded it from now through the end of twenty-three fiscal year and then reevaluated it, we could even go forward and say we'll do it for another year to see how successful it is, to see if it got the response that we hope for? I I would like to do, I would like to do that and say through two thousand twenty-three and then, because we could still at the, even in July. When is the deadline? What month in two thousand twenty-four?
It's December thirty-first.
Okay, so even in two thousand twenty-four, we could say we're going to do it for the next two years. But I'd like to see, I mean, I I can understand starting it now because people are making their plans and and want to get their kids into programs when school's over. But I'd like to see it done on a year-to-year basis. So that's, I-
I I think it's important to point out that this difference that seems to be made up by the Finance Department about this. You're talking about a six-month period of time. You're talking about going through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four if you're talking about fiscal year twenty-three, and then making a choice about a six-month period of time. Once again, I think that's a distinction without distinction. I think it's something that the ARPA program is not set up on that same timetable, which is why we have these December figures in here. So this bit about, well, we'll we'll do this for a little over a year and then we'll decide if we want to go six more months. I don't think it's a stretch to say, let's just say the six months now. And then we have the ability to give parents and children a little more certainty about how the program's going to work. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Councilmember Adams?
I I just, I guess I just don't understand or or see the the idea that this this program wouldn't be of benefit to the community. You know, so the idea, well, let's look, let's go back and look, look back at it and see whether or not this was a good use of the funds or not. I mean, people use the the program, so we know that the program is used. What this is aiming to do is to alleviate, you know, some of the burden that we've seen. So I just, I guess I don't understand, you know, it it seems like an exercise just to exercise is what it feels like to me. And I just, you know, are we really going to say that, that, you know, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four that, you know, that's too long and maybe we'll want to stop, stop the program, you know? So I I guess I don't understand where the the issue is, knowing that I I think, knowing that the program is already used and knowing that this could actually help to alleviate, you know, some of the burden that's that's been placed on on families during this time. To me, it just doesn't, I don't see why why we're splitting hairs here to to only look at such a small window of time when we know the impact is 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 much more than just looking at, you know, the next, the next very brief period of time.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yeah, thank you, James. What I was thinking is that we do not know the unintended cost from this that would happen for the park and rec department as a whole, and we'd be able to evaluate it then. And it's actually a year and three months that they'd be given. And I think we'd have data and we'd have everything that we need. I mean, if you put a ton of kids in a swimming pool that you can't get lifeguards for, you're in trouble. So I think there's unintended cost involved sometimes when you offer something free. And that if we could evaluate it and it seemed like a program that we can keep doing, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but I think there needs to be an internal evaluation about how it's going on and and how it affects us by providing that. And if it it's not, if it's beneficial for the kids and it's not detrimental for us, then I see it going on further. But I think there needs to be an evaluative time, and I think that's a perfect time to do it is at a budget.
I I, you know, again, it seems that we're trying to make up things about the program. If we don't have lifeguards at the pool to be able to support it being open, then it's not open. There are occupancy restrictions on pools. There are capacity restrictions on floor hockey. There are restrictions on the number of people that can be on a soccer team. All of these things are already there. We know about those things. And if the program can't be- And if the program can't be supported, not having this money available is not going to have anything to do with that. If we find that the programs become overrun, it's the same thing we always do. It's going to be on a first-come, first-served basis. So once again, we're talking about making some change for a six-month period of time after we have a year to have experience with the program. If something's going to happen, it's going to happen earlier rather than later. Again, we seem to just be making a distinction here for no other reason than making a distinction. Other discussion? I will then propose approval of Resolution 7433 with the item that has been provided to us titled Revised Backup Material Provided by Mayor McManus for Item Number Five, with the section now therefore be it resolved that the City Council allocate up to $100,000, changing that amount to $175,000. Is there anyone wishing to make a second on that?
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Jorgensen dissenting. We'll move on to item number six, Resolution 7434. Mr. Tetter?
Yes, Finance Director Diane Pelletier will be going over the list of ARPA funds and our recommended uses. You'll see in the backup material that we have each of the water and wastewater items completely itemized and listed out for you, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Diane.
If you don't mind indulging me, I know a lot of you have heard some of the information on the staff report, but I'd like to read it so that people who are hearing it for the first time hear it. So I hope you don't mind, but I'd like to go through a few of the bullet points. On March 11th, 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law and established the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, which together make up the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program. And the city may use the awards of this program to cover eligible costs incurred during the periods beginning on March 3rd, 2021, and ends on December 31st, 2024, if the award funds are expended by December 31st, 2026. The City of Boulder City's maximum total allocation of ARPA funding is $21,773,790.18. Funding will be released to state and local governments by Treasury in two tranches. The first tranche of $10,866,895.09 was awarded on July 20th, 2021. The second tranche of $10,866,895.09 is scheduled to be dispersed May 10th, 2022. So we have not gotten the second slice yet. And a little bit of additional background information. The statutory eligible uses are, is for basically, to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to such eligible workers of the recipient, or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who performed essential work, for the provision of governmental services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such recipient due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the recipient prior to the emergency, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Boulder City currently doesn't qualify for the broadband infrastructure. So on February 8th, 2022, the council approved the spending of $193,000 in Resolution 7989 to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. So that was, $193,000 was reserved, I believe that was in, I want to say the first meeting in February, the council approved that. And staff is recommending to expand on on the uses of the ARPA funds in the following manner for governmental services. $500,000 for assistance to the city clerk's budget, including amending the city's municipal code. $300,000 for assistance to the municipal court's budget, including complying with unfunded mandates. $80,000 for enhancement of the permit process for public works, community development, and fire. So these three things fall into the unrestricted ARPA funding, which we have yet to receive, but we should be receiving in about another month. But it would be in time to put in the budget. Staff is also recommending making necessary investments in water and sewer for the following projects. I'm not going to go through them all because Keegan Littrell did go through them all, but they're itemized in the staff report and the totals have been included in the proposed resolution for funding. I'd like to pause here to talk about another item that was mentioned in the staff report, Fire Chief Request for Discussion on a $50,000 Amount for the Community CPR AED Program. So I don't know if he wants to address that or, okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Councilmember Bridges, as you remember during our strategic planning meeting, one of the focuses that kept coming up was a community CPR and AED program. And so we developed a plan to work with the business community and to put AEDs throughout the business community in Boulder City. We have a meeting next week with the chamber to try to get some of that moving. But part of that includes getting the business community on board to come do CPR classes at our fire department, which we'll do free of charge. But the AEDs, the defibrillators that are in the community, we're asking for some of the ARPA funds to be able to start that process up. And so we had requested from city manager for $50,000 to allow us to start that. We did a GIS study of the amount of space downtown and we came up with, we believe, about 150 to 160 AEDs that would be needed in the future. So the plan is if we can get the city to start that purchase and then work with the business community and other grants to continue to build on that. So this isn't a one-year process, this is a long-term process. So that would be, that's what the funds would be for. We've got a bid for about $1,349 for each of those AEDs. And that's in the commercial cabinet, the ones, there's several models of them, there's some that are a little cheaper, that are really hard to use, and these are intended so that anybody in the community will be able to pull it off the shelf that's had any CPR training and use them. And then the plan would be they'd be placed throughout the business community, inside the different businesses. So that's why it's important that we'll work with the chamber and get the other businesses on board because they'll have to support that.
Could you state the cost again per unit?
Yeah, $1,349 is the bid that we got from one of the major, they sell a bunch of AEDs, but this is the one they recommended was the best. It's one of the lower-cost ones, you can get them cheaper, like $1,300, they go all the way up to $2,800. This is the one he thought would be the best fit for our community based on what we told them we needed.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Again, I think this is a really good use of the money.
Thank you.
Okay, so currently that is not in the the itemization that's included in Attachment A, but we can add that. It would be for the use of, for the provision of governmental services under that category, which is the unrestricted money. So at this point, I guess we can answer any questions you have. Well, let me do this, let me just go through the totals because the total combined water and wastewater, water wastewater, wastewater projects totals $10,319,537. So those are added to the breakdown, the Attachment A, which would show the uses. And in that Attachment A, you can see what the total ARPA designation for Boulder City is, then what we've, the funding that was currently received, then you see what has been spent, which is a small amount of money, the allocated costs, and that was done in February. So now the bottom portion of Attachment A is what we're proposing be added so that we can start working on spending down some of this money. So the the use for the provision of governmental services, the unrestricted, would be incorporated into the budgets for the municipal updates. And the, that'd be $500,000, $300,000 for the unfunded mandates for the court. And the community develop public works and fire budgets in improving the permit process was $80,000. And that was discussed at the March 3rd meeting and we brought it back today to actually get your concurrence so we can put it as part of the ARPA spending plan. And in addition to that, under the restricted monies, we'd be asking to add these water and wastewater projects so that we can start spending down the money that is only usable for four areas, and the water and wastewater seems to be the best use in staff's opinion. And with all that, the remaining unaside, unassigned, restricted after Resolutions 7389 and 7434 would be $1,260 in the restricted and the unassigned unrestricted. And of course, we'd have to add the $50,000 that was just discussed. So anyway, it would still be quite a bit of money left to have for the city to decide how they want to spend. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. Where would the $175,000 for the swimming programs, where would that come from?
That's a, that's a separate resolution. So we would, we would subtract that from the ARPA monies in the next time we bring it forward, it wouldn't have to be shown in this one because it's its own resolution that was just adopted by the council. So it would just be, it would be deducted from that Attachment A. So when we bring, when we come back again to, when we decide additional spending we want to do, that would show as an amount spent.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be incorporated into today's resolution.
Okay, this is just the first tranche, right? Or would that be part of that?
Part of it is the second.
Oh, part of it is the second?
That 175 is part of the money we haven't received yet. And also the three items that are recommended for use in the budget are from the unrestricted, which is part of the second tranche.
Okay, well, that makes me very happy because what I get to see is, is we can move ahead on on these projects, where I know that there have been projects we've, we've waited a long time to move forward on and to be able to say now, okay, it's a go, that this would be the moment when they could get started with design and so on, correct? Is that, okay? That's it, thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that. You know, there are two things. One, we had earlier discussed, up to $100,000 for broadband connectivity to city-owned properties. Again, in my view, that's from the restricted funds of the ARPA funding.
That is.
And the $175,000 for the sports and children's activities, that is also an allowed use under the restricted funds for impacts due to COVID-19.
I don't believe that falls under what the four items that I read.
We'll check on that. I do understand that the impacts of COVID-19 definitely, since it's supporting families, might qualify for that, so we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Well, you know, I appreciate that. I've read it several times in different places. And I know that the, the information has been, oh, no, you can't use this for that. But the rules that were finally set out by Treasury, I think that make that very clear, that money can be spent to alleviate the impacts of COVID on families.
Well, we can further?
There's money in either case, I understand that.
Yes, either way, and what we can do is get a clearer determination, and if it's determined that it could be used out of the restricted funds, we just would ship that spent money over there. So there's a lot of flexibility.
I would rather have it confirmed rather than speculation.
Well, at this point, I would say it would be, at this moment, I would say we would have to take it out of the unrestricted. That's my opinion.
And I would say otherwise, so.
That's fine.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, second question. For an item under total wastewater of concrete line erasure basins, I believe that is something that was questioned whether or not we would do that, depending on whether we receive funding from SNWA on an alternative to our current wastewater program.
That might be a Keegan question?
So this is, this is sort of a liquid document, I'm gathering, that things might come out or?
There was two items that I had originally thought that would come out if we do the wastewater treatment plant. There's this one and I'm drawing a blank on the other one. One of them still will need to proceed and the other one can be removed if, does it have a dollar amount beside this one?
$400,000? It's about half?
The chlorine contact chamber is the one that needs to remain, this would be the one that could come out.
Right, okay. Okay, that, that was just my question that, in the event, so you're presenting these, but there might be something if it comes up that we would take something out or put something in.
This resolution can be brought back anytime, at any time. And the ones that are from the unrestricted that are to be used, like for the the pool program, or even if they are restricted, either way, that money will automatically come out and be put in the general fund because those programs are going to start on, well, one of the programs will start now, I guess. But the other program would start July 1st, so those monies would come out. But on these actual capital projects, if we, you know, we start working on projects and it's determined that one of these is no longer necessary, then that money could be reallocated.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, just some clarification, so I did look it up. If we were directly giving funds to the households participating in the programs, that would be one of the prescribed uses, but since it's being used as revenue replacement, that falls under the revenue replacement provision.
Thank you for verifying that.
So that is part of the rule that went into effect on April 1st, 2022, so it just happened. And it said the final rule, rule offers a standard allowance for revenue loss of up to $10 million, allowing recipients to select between a standard amount of revenue loss or complete a full revenue loss calculation. As you and anyone who's been following this is aware, Boulder City did not have a revenue loss, so we're taking the standard amount of revenue loss. That's the pot of money that would be used for the pool program. And that just went into effect on April 1st.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. This might be a better question for Mr. Littrell. I guess my, my question is with regards to some of these projects around the water and wastewater, you know, in what, what areas are we making sure that what we are doing is improving upon our system and not just replacing, you know, like for like, you know, there are actually upgrades, you know? It's been mentioned, you know, how many times, you know, the water crisis that we find ourselves in, you know, that we have this opportunity now is great and might be, you know, this might be the one chance we get, so we got to make sure we do it right because we need to be moving towards more and more water conservation. So what is, what is that approach like?
Well, as you can guess, every day, it seems like there's newer and newer technology that comes out, stuff that's more efficient, whether it be power or water use. So our staff, between our staff, Mr. Stube, it's myself, city engineer, we're always looking at the newer technology, newer items that would be installed. So, yeah, we're looking closely at that and make sure if we do go down the road of building a new treatment plant, we won't want to spend $500,000 on something today and then in two years have to rip it out.
Right, and that's kind of the, to me, the most important point is that, you know, as technology changes and as this gets to be more and more serious of a situation, that it's ready to be, if it's not being upgraded right then, it's that what we do move to upgrade, it's ready to go from there. Because that's, you know, if we are making those changes that, well, here's the fix right now, and then five years down the line, it needs to be completely redone because there are much more dire needs. So as long as you guys are looking at that, you know, that's, that's what I want to hear, basically. But it's just, we just have to be sure when we're looking at this, this one opportunity to do this, we got to make sure that we do it right. we got to make sure that we do it right, so...
A perfect example is when I was talking about the lift stations. We're going to do a conceptual plan on how all three of those are working together. So we're looking big picture at every one of these items.
Thank you.
And I do just want to add, each one of these projects will not be sitting on a list for years to come. They are going to be completed. We will go out and issue the RFPs, hire people to do these as soon as we can because the money has to be spent.
And then the only other thing that I think as far as, you know, just making sure when it comes to, you know, watering, you know, for the golf courses and parks and stuff like that, we, you know, we're already talking about turf removal. And, you know, we might find ourselves in 10, 15 years saying we don't have the water to be watering all the parks, watering all the golf courses. I'm, you know, I obviously I don't want to see that happen, but, you know, it might be out of our control. So just making sure that we're also not investing, you know, large sums just to take care of one issue that immediately, again, needs to be ready to be, so that it, once we move on from that, if we can, if that is no longer a best use for that water, that it can then be used in other ways and utilized, captured, saved, however we need to do it. But, you know, I just want to make sure that we have a big picture look at this because it's, again, it's our one chance to get it right.
I guess I just want to make a comment because I can feel the apprehension that everyone feels, and I think including staff and myself, is that it's almost like a clock is ticking. You hear tick-tock, tick-tock, because if we don't spend this money, we will have to write a check back to the federal government. And that's the part that I think is going to have everybody trying to do everything at once. But the sooner we start, I think, coming up with a list of sound projects, the sooner we can, you know, start working on them. And until these things are approved, we really, you know, can't move on it with the ARPA funding. So I guess, you know, I don't want to push a sense of urgency because it's a lot of money and it's a big decision. I get it, I feel the same way, it just kind of makes me nervous. But time goes by so quick. And if we don't start at least making a couple of steps towards having some areas we can start working on, it could get really bad at the end.
Right, slow and steady might not win the race this round. But, you know, we also want to be sure we don't get ahead of ourselves so that we're not tripping over our own feet, getting out the door. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, just a quick question. I have it highlighted in lime green. The first tranche was awarded July 20th, 2021. So we've had, it's 10 months, right? Nine months that we've, since it's been awarded. And I think it's time to push the button on some of these projects.
Well, especially the ones that are restricted because we have very limited options in how we're going to spend that money.
And we have the projects to do them.
That's the list of projects you have for you.
Anyone else? You know, I do have that reservation. I mean, we look at our capital improvement fund over the past many years, projects languished on there. We are going to be competing against other municipalities as far as getting companies who are able to do the work. I think Councilmember Adams had a good point. You know, with some of these things, we have a few balls in the air. You know, SNWA potentially doing work or funding work at the wastewater treatment. It's going to take some coordination, it's a lot of money. And no, I don't want to see us write a check back to Uncle Sam. They were generous enough to give it to us, let's use it well. And I do understand we have some flexibility. So if these things go out to bid and it comes back and they say, you know, you folks are off base here, we do have the ability to make some adjustments, but that window is narrowing each day. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7434?
I would like to move to accept Resolution Number 7434.
I'll second that.
I would like to make one comment. I believe we already had an adjustment that we need to make.
Yes, we have to add that $50,000.
Would you like to amend your motion to include that?
Sure. I would move to amend the acceptance of Resolution Number 7434 to include $50,000 to the community CPR AED program.
That'll work.
Do you wish to renew your second?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Would you like to include the $100,000 for the dog park? In the motion?
The 72,000.
Excuse me.
To include the 72,000 and to include the 72,000 for the fencing for the dog park.
And that would be under the unrestricted, as would be the $50,000.
So would you like to restate your motion, well, renew your...
Renew my motion, which would be accept Resolution Number 7434 to include $50,000 for the community CPR AED program and $72,000 for the fenced dog parks in Veterans 1 and 3, including fencing and benches and plastic bag dispensers.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Pelletier. All right, that brings us to our last item, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak during this period may speak on any subject. We'll have up to five minutes to do so. We ask people to be civil and concise in their comments. Anyone in council chambers that would like to speak? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in, the phone number 702-589-9629. This is the final public comment period for the special council meeting on budget issues. Anyone wishing to call, the number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the final public comment?
No comments were received.
Thank you. All right, hearing no one for the final public comment period then, we will close the comment period. Again, I want to thank staff very much for all of their work. This annual exercise is never a whole bunch of fun, but we're making our way through it. And with that, we're adjourned, thank you.